Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, the third session of this Town of Stoughton Special Town Meeting. This evening is October 26, 2020, and the Special Town Meeting is now called to order. This town meeting is being held via remote platform Zoom webinar due to public health concerns arising from COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation. It's also being streamed on their website. You can check out SMAC's website, and it's being recorded for future broadcasting. I ask you to please rise and stand as you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Next, I'd like to introduce our panel guests. We'll start with the school committee again. Sandra Groppi, Chairwoman of Stoughton School Committee. Katie Peanut-Nokian, Vice Chair, Stoughton School Committee. Dr. John Marcus, Superintendent, Stoughton Public Schools. Christine Howe, Chair, Select Board. Steve Kaybee, Vice Chair, Select Board. Deborah Roberts, Member of the Select Board. Joseph McCrisky, Member of the Select Board. Robert Oregan, Member of the Select Board. Dr. Robin Grimm, Stoughton's Town Manager. Stephanie Carrara, Interim Town Clerk. Ed Trumpfield, Chair of the Finance Committee. Bob Desmond, Vice Chair, Finance Committee. Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. Gene Fleming, Deputy Moderator. Lauren Goldberg, Town Council from KP Law. Mark Tisdale, Town Engineer in Development Services. Michael Hammond is a Station Manager from SMAC TV. And I am your Town Moderator, Bob Mullin. Good evening to everyone. Before we begin, I would ask Select Chair Christine Howe, she has a few announcements. Christine?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, I'll keep it brief tonight so that we can get to the business at hand. First, I want to thank you, Mr. Moderator, for all the work you've been doing in the team at Town Hall. I think things have been running smoothly and people have been patient, which is greatly appreciated as we work our way through the virtual town meeting. So I encourage folks to stick to the process that we've been employing and hopefully we'll get through everything tonight. In addition, we sent out the remap, the Racial Equity Planning Grant Survey last week, and we had a response rate of about 78. So we'd love to get some more folks to respond to that survey. So I'm going to include it in the link in the Q and A tonight. And if anybody has any questions, let me know. But we'd love to hear from all of you in that survey. So we'd encourage you to fill it out so we can collect a little bit of data to inform our work as we make our way through that program, which we received some great technical assistance for and hopefully, you know, have something to present next spring. So again, I encourage you to take the survey. And thank you all for your participation tonight. And I look forward to some more spirited questions, answers, and working our way through the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, Stephanie Carrara, the Interim Town Clerk, has a few announcements.
Hi, everybody. I'm Stephanie, the Interim Town Clerk. I just wanted, I was getting a few phone calls, so I thought I'd let everybody know about with regards to pulling papers. I'm going to have papers available for, available on Monday, November 9th, to start pulling for selectmen, school committee, moderator. And those papers will need to be in by December 29th at 5:00. For town meeting reps, you can pull your papers as well, and they have to be back in by February 16th at 5:00. If anyone has any questions, you know, you can always call me. The reason why I'm not doing it earlier is because of the election. And I have to, even though the election ends on the 3rd, we still are getting overseas ballots in, and everything has to be certified by Saturday. That has to be my top priority. That's why I'm asking that everyone can start to pull on Monday. If anyone has any questions, give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrara. All right, next, I'd like to introduce panelists. First, I should say Christine Howe, Select Madam Chair. She's one of the panelists. Actually, I did, let me start over again, please. My apologies. I'd like to tell you who's present here at Town Hall. We have sitting in for Christine Howe is Steve Kaybee. He will be monitoring the raised hands. So we make sure if you are going to, you would like to speak, please raise your hand. We'll talk about that in a moment. Stephanie Carrara is here at Town Hall. She's monitoring the Q and A along with Dave Laurie. Lauren Goldberg, Town Councilman from KP Law is present here. Also, Gene Fleming, Deputy Town Moderator. Trish Stropshire from the IT Department, monitoring all the IT and the technology requirements here at Town Hall. Cynthia Walsh, a Town Meeting Rep from Precinct 2, and also Phyllis Kelleher, Town Meeting Rep from Precinct 2. They're both here because they don't have any computer access. So we're just trying to accommodate them and provide computers for them. All right, I think I got everybody here. So the first thing we need to do is take a poll to determine the quorum, who's present. We have 166 seats filled, so 83 is considered a quorum. I should say 84, 83 plus 1, so it's 84. So we can have the poll put up first. Okay, we just have to demote a few people. So I'll take a moment, just be patient, please. And while we're doing that, I would just remind everybody, because we're doing Zoom webinar, it's virtual, we all need to be patient. Please be patient again. Technology is not perfect for our needs, but we'll make it work for the best of us. So once we get the poll ready to go, it'll be presented before us.
Christine, it's Trish. I sent you a quick email. Am I keeping you where you are? Are you using 2 today?
I have 2, Trish, so I'm voting on the poll, and that's ready.
Perfect, thank you. All right, everybody, here we go.
Here comes the poll. All right. As we've seen prior nights, are you present? And you also have not applicable. Please vote now. You have 20 seconds. Okay, can we please end the poll and show the results, please? All right, I have yes, 119. No, I should say not applicable. Someone put in 1. So we have 120 people, Town Meeting Representatives, present. So we do have a quorum. Just one more. Okay, we're going to add 1 to that count. We have 121 Town Meeting Reps. A representative was not brought in to vote. So it's 121 Town Meeting Reps present this evening. Thank you all for voting. All right, I just want to make a couple announcements from the moderator. Just a reminder, as you know, there are 2 methods available to communicate with the moderator during town meeting. We have the raised hand, which is equivalent to sitting in the front rows at a physical town meeting. Pretty much, you have to raise your hand at the bottom of the screen, or depending on what device you have, there might be other locations on your screen. Raised hand is when you want to speak. You will be recognized in the order of you raised your hand. We have a board here at Town Hall. Steve Kaybee is monitoring that. And he will list everybody in order that they raised their hand for that particular article. The use of the Q and A in Zoom is to post points of order, points of information, and points procedure. The moderator will interrupt the meeting to hear your concerns, and the moderator will have to make any decision that needs to be taken at that moment. If necessary, I will determine if I need to confer with Town Council as to how to address your concerns. And you will be recognized as soon as we, as soon as the speakers, I'm not going to interrupt the speaker, but as soon as the speaker is over, point of order, I will come, I will obviously recognize that person to speak on the point of orders. All right. We got through, last Wednesday evening, we got through up until Article 16, which we tabled. That was the Glen Echo Recreation Facilities Construction. All right, we're going to need a motion that was put on the table. We're going to need a motion to take it off the table.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I recognize Gene Fleming.
I move to take Article 16 off the table.
The table. All those, first, let me ask the raised hands, has it been cleared? Raised hands cleared? Okay, all those in favor of taking it off the table, please raise your hand now. Okay, if I get the count on the raised hands? Anybody give me the count on the raised hands?
92.
92, plus 1, 93. All right, let's clear the raised hands. And please let me know where the raised hands are cleared. They're clear. All those who vote no, please raise your hands now. And it's just a simple majority. Okay, if I get the count on the raised hands? 9. All right, 93 to 9, motion passes. Okay, Article 16, I just want to say that there were some people are going to, a motion was made on Wednesday evening, so I believe we can just go right to the presenter. All right, and then there's 4 people that wanted to speak on Wednesday night. We're going to continue with those 4 speakers. When that time comes, I'll recognize those 4 speakers, I can talk about who's in line to speak. All right, I believe Eric Coleman is the presenter on this article. This is Article 16 on page 27 of your wanted books.
Hello, am I on now?
Yes, you are, Mr. Coleman. Go right ahead.
Okay. For those of you who don't know where Glen Echo Park is, if you're coming from Stoughton Center on 139, which is Pleasant Street just before the Masonic Lodge, on the left is Glen Echo Boulevard, and down the end of Glen Echo Boulevard is Glen Echo Park. The picture that you see on the screen, hopefully, is the entrance to Glen Echo Park in the fall. It's very pretty. And the sign posts are going to have to be moved to the side so that we'll have enough room for the entrance. All right, next photo, please. This is a photo from a rock outcropping on Glen Echo. And I think a little further on the right there, on the right side of the land is Wampanoag Indian Land, or maybe it's Ponca Pog. All right, and next slide, please. And you can go up a little bit on that. These are some, these are from Kyle Zick, who was our landscape architect. And he had taken some of these photos. And let's see if we can go down a little bit to show the rest of that slide. And bottom left is a vernal pool, I believe. And we took care of all those. We've got them marked and they're properly taken care of. All right, next slide, please. And at this point, I'm about finished. This is the plan, the general, the overall layout. And so, any questions on this, it's probably better to be addressed to the engineering department. Thank you for your time, and we'll be ready with questions.
Mr. Tisdale, did you want to add anything to that presentation, or do I just wait for questions?
Yeah, we'll answer any questions that make him look.
Sure. I should say, first up is Teresa Tapper. This is, you were up from Wednesday evening. I have Teresa Tapper, Peter Baynes, Patricia Colburn, and Karen Clip from Wednesday. So we're going to continue with those 4 first. Teresa Tapper?
I'm sorry, but I actually didn't realize I must have raised my hand by mistake.
Not a problem, Teresa.
Okay.
Letting us know. Next up is Peter Baynes. And when people come able to speak, unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Well, I must have raised my hand in there also. I had nothing to say on this. I'm interested, but nothing to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Patricia Colburn.
You have my name on.
Looking for Patricia Colburn?
Hi, this is Patricia Colburn, Precinct 4.
All right, we hear you. Go ahead.
I actually did raise my hand. The question I had was actually about the trees. I met a person from Canton who lives on Glen Echo during one of Dwight McCarren's Glen Echo tours. And there was a big, big to-do on Facebook about Stoughton clearcutting trees recently. And apparently, there was a very old-growth tree called Grandpa that was cut down. And I've looked, and I don't see anything about a plan for what trees came down. And I'm just curious if someone can explain to me which trees were picked and why, and if they will be doing any more tree removal of the very old trees. Thank you.
Who can answer that for us, Mark?
Is that okay if I answer that, Eric?
Go ahead.
All right. Yeah, thanks for the question. From an engineering standpoint, we essentially took the Kyle Zick plans that were vetted through the town, and we put them on this plan as you see in front of you. And essentially, to grade the great lawn, to grade the parking area and turnaround, you can't really save trees in that particular area. But on the outskirts of all the limited work that you can see on the plan, you can see the tree line. I think it's in green. You might have a hard time seeing that. You know, there was a plan when we walked around, we flagged all the larger trees. But that's right on the edge of the limit of work. Unfortunately, everything inside the limit of work had to be removed due to the flattening of the area and the grading of the area to be done.
If I may follow up, Mr. Moderator? I can't see this at all. It's very tiny on my screen, so is there another way I could get this? And are there more trees still to come down? Thank you.
No, there are no more trees to come down. What you see out there is the limit of work.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Karen, you just got to speak up. I think I hear you a little bit.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to compliment that through you, Engineering Department, on this project. I've been excitedly waiting. I got lost there a few times, and hopefully with all these improvements, I won't get lost anymore. This is going to be a great project for the town, and I think the residents are going to love it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Karen. Just remember, when you're able to speak, please state your name and precinct number. George?
Yes, sir, Mr. Moderator. Thank you very much. I like your, I like your blue striped shirt, very pretty for tonight. I've got a couple of questions on this, from you or through you to whoever can answer it. First off, what was the initial cost of this purchase?
I believe it's $1.2 million.
$1.2 million?
Yeah, I think, Eric, is that correct? I think it was around $1.2 million for the 96 acres.
Can you hear me? Yeah, $1.5 million is what I saw.
Is that $1.5 million now?
I believe that's correct.
$1.5 million.
2012, for buying the land.
All right, Eric.
All right, I've been out, I've been out to this land. First of all, I think this is going to be a big boondoggle. I'm not happy with this. I'm not happy with what I saw out there either. I do have to compliment the town engineer who's given me some information on this. Eric just mentioned something about vernal pools being out there. I didn't see anything flagged that I could recognize as being a vernal pool. That's the first thing. The second thing is going down Glen Echo Boulevard. It starts off as a nice two-way street, but narrows down to basically 1.5 car wide and going into the entrance of this proposed park. I don't think there's sufficient room for multiple cars going in and out. And I was wondering whether there was consideration for using Glen Echo as an entrance and circling around and going through DDF, which would make it a very nice circle going in and out, having one way in and one way out. Has any consideration been given to that idea?
Would you like me to answer that, Eric?
Well, I'll try.
I ask you both to hold off for 1 minute. I want to recognize a point of information from Mr. John Morton. He has a valid point of information.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I do, Mr. Morton. You have a point of information?
Yes, the purchase price for the property was $1.2 million. The amount that was approved by the town meeting at the time of the purchase was $1.5 million because there had to be other things done that were not, including a survey and a conservation easement. But the actual purchase price was $1.2 million.
Hey, Mr. Morton. I'm sorry, Mr. Delinsky, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but it was a vital point of information. What was your question again, sir?
Well, I was concerned about the entrance and the exit. And I was looking at the possibility of the entrance coming in Glen Echo Boulevard and exited through DDF. Now, I think that should, that could be a strong consideration for making this project work. That's my opinion. Secondly, in the storm management report on page 21, there's a yearly maintenance, maintenance cost for street sweeping for $500, riprap for $300, and infiltration basin for $1,500, indicating a total cost of $2,300 a year. But if you look at the plans, and if you take a look at the upper right-hand corner of this picture that's on the, around that circle there, there's a proposed portable restrooms. I don't see any costs associated with cleaning these things. I'm very much concerned about that. If people are going to use the area, that, those portable restrooms do become a little bit rank at times, and should be cleaned. There's no cost estimate, unless the town has the facilities to pump these things out every day. It's going to be a concern to me on this thing also. The other thing that I got from Eric Coleman, which was very helpful, was that there's going to be an electronic gate in the front, somewhere up along the front. I think where it has it on the picture, there's a thing that says gate. There's no cost for that in this thing. And I'm presuming this must be coming out of this $236,000. But I'm also concerned as to what's going to happen, A, with all the traffic, who's monitoring this, this open space that's going to be left vacant at night? When we first went ahead with this purchase, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the chief, police chief said at the time he could not monitor it. The public works director said he couldn't maintain it. And I'm concerned about what happened between then and now, that all of a sudden, we're going to take another $236,000 to clean up the mess that's back there right now and make this as beautiful a park as, as it's proposed. So I'd like some answers, if I could, to some of my statements and questions, especially the monitoring, the portable toilets, the roadway. I mean, there's a lot of things in here, and this $1.2 million, then another $500,000 or so, $560,000 on top of that. And this is going to be a multimillion-dollar boondoggle, in my opinion. And that's, like I said, it's an opinion. But I'm concerned as to where we stand with Butters, what they thought. I looked at some minutes, and I only saw some people from Canton that was at a meeting on October.
Mr. Delinsky, can you just wrap it up? You've kind of gone over your time, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I'm so passionate about this, this mess here that I've been over.
Thank you. Let's see if we can get an answer for you. Mr. Tisdale or Eric Coleman? You, Laura?
I think I can answer that, if it's okay.
I'll start, that's all right.
You want to start, Eric?
Sure. First of all, the mess that's there, if you want, if you build a house on land that already has a house, you have to destroy the house, and it's a mess. Then you build a house, then it's neat. So what Mr. Delinsky saw was after, there was, there were trees that were taken down. There was mud. It was a mess. I didn't see it, but it should have been. All right, I'll try to answer the questions as best I've got them. I took some notes. Restrooms, those are monthly rentals, and they're going to be taken care of by the people that, that we're renting it from. So that's not going to be a problem as far as we're concerned. Then there was, if we went to DD Avenue, a road through to DD Avenue, that would increase the cost tremendously, and there'd be more trees that would have to come down, and then we'd have to do another contract for the trees. So, and I think the people on DD Avenue would not be particularly happy with that idea. All right, the gate that he mentioned, that motorized gate, was included in the costs. And so, and if we went through to DD Avenue, there'd have to be another gate on the other side. Security, I believe there's going to be a security camera in there, that's part of it. And there were some notes about the police and fire, police and DPW that had some problems with this. They do not have problems anymore. I believe we have a new police chief since that letter was issued. And DPW, we have a letter from them saying they're happy with it. I don't know if we have the same superintendent of DPW. George, did I miss anything?
Mr. Moderator, if I may just follow up on Eric's comments to answer some of the questions as well. This article is asking for, I'm a member of the Glen Echo Committee. We were constituted in 2013 to put together a plan for use of this space. That was the position of the town at the time. That's what we've been working on for the last 7 years. So in terms of the boondoggle, unfortunately, the cost of some of these things has gone up over the near decade that we've been waiting for both the concept design plans to become final design bid-ready plans, and as well as the conservation restriction to be lifted. So this article is simply looking for additional funding to account for the increase in the costs of doing this Phase 1 of the plan, which the town had asked for when it purchased the land, by putting together that committee and doing the work over the last 7 years. So yeah, it's, it's an increase in cost. We've seen construction prices go up 10, 15, 20% over the last several years.
Just so you all have an idea, we did go out to bid, um, and we got many bids back. It wasn't just that we got one or two back and it was over the amount. I believe we had ten or twelve responses. Mark might remember more exactly, but I want to say it was close to a dozen responses. And they were all in a range much, to the degree higher that we're asking for. So it wasn't that we only got one or two bids back and they happened to be higher and we, you know, could go out to rebid. This was, this was consistent across the board. So it really, it's a project that had been approved and, and we're just looking to, to be able to finally finish it now that all the prep work has been done.
All right, let's, uh, we still have some more speakers here. Cynthia Walsh? Cynthia, we're just waiting for you. Unmute yourself.
Um, Cynthia Walsh, precinct two?
Yes, Cynthia, go ahead.
I move the question.
Yay!
All right, um, don't need for any background noise, please. Uh, Cynthia Walsh has moved the question. Before we, uh, I just want to read the, uh, a couple of reports, and then we can, um, take a vote on that question. Uh, can I hear from Ed Trumpfield, Finance Committee report? Okay. Ed Trumpfield? Ed Trumpfield, just unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Okay, it was Article sixteen. The Finance Committee voted thirteen to two on September sixteenth to recommend the town meeting.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, let me just read from the book Municipal Operations Committee voted six to zero to recommend approval of the town meeting. And, uh, this was not in the, you know, warrant books, but was on the virtual front table on Article sixteen on September second. CPC voted to recommend funding of two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand in cash. The vote was nine to zero. That's on the virtual front table.
Uh, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Ed.
Just want to make sure everybody knows that this was supposed to be cash from the CPC, uh, fund, fund balance for this project, for the remainder of two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars.
Okay. It's cash, and we understand that now. One second, please. Okay. Town Council just wants to clarify that. Go ahead, Town Council.
I apologize, Mr. Moderator. Excuse me. This money is coming from the Community Preservation Fund, FY twenty-one budgeted annual reserve. That's the money that was not allocated to one of the reserve accounts in the Community Preservation Fund. Um, and so it sits there ready for use if town meeting chooses to until, uh, June, uh, June thirtieth.
Okay, the question was moved by Cynthia Walsh to cut off the bait. Uh, there's twelve people in line, just let everybody know, there's twelve people that still like to speak on Article sixteen. All right, uh, we need a two-thirds majority to cut off the bait. Okay, I'm gonna ask to clear the raised hands. Once I get notice that the raised hands are cleared. All right, the raised hands are cleared. Those who want to cut off the bait, raise your hand now. Ten seconds. All right, if I could get a count, please? What was that? Nine, three, okay. All those, okay, let's clear the raised hands. Please let me know when they're clear. Okay, they're clear. All those who oppose, please raise your hand now. Ten seconds. All right, can I get a count, please? Twenty-five. Okay, ninety-three to twenty-five. It's two-thirds. So the motion to cut off debate passes. Back to Article sixteen. All right. Eric, did you want to do a quick summary?
Uh, no, I don't. I think it's all there, unless Mark's got something to say. I appreciate all the support.
I have nothing to add.
You're okay, okay. Let's, let's go to the vote then. Do we have the poll put up? This is for Article sixteen. Okay, the poll is now before you. Please vote now. All right, thank you. All right, uh, ten seconds. Since this is cash, obviously, it's a majority vote. Can we end the poll, please? Okay, for Article sixteen, I have yeses, one-ten, no, twenty-two, abstentions, five. Article sixteen passes. One-ten to twenty-two with five, five abstentions. Thank you. All right, let's move on to Article seventeen. This is on page, if you warrant books. Uh, this is the Pratt's Court Replacement Wells Investigation, page twenty-eight. And I believe Mr. Phil McNulty. Uh, excuse me, let me have Ed Trumpfield make the motion, please. Mr. Ed? Ed Trumpfield for the motion? And your report also at the end of the motion.
Okay. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Article seventeen, Pratt's Court Replacement Well Investigation. Proposed motion that the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a study and investigation to install test wells to pinpoint replacement wells location, install two replacement satellite wells, perform two twenty, two forty-eight hour pump tests, and prepare the pump test report to Mass DEP, including all incidental and related costs, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow such sums pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And also, although these will be general obligation bonds of the town, it is anticipated that they will be repaid through the Water Enterprise Fund. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Sections twenty, thereby reducing by a like amount, amount authorized to borrow to pay such costs. The Finance Committee voted fourteen to one on September sixteen to recommend to town meeting.
Can I get a second, please? Seconded by Steve Caby. Okay, to present this would be Mr. Phil McNulty. Uh, Mr. McNulty, just please unmute yourself.
There we go. Did you hear anything I said?
Nope, we just heard you now.
And, and the, the Pratt's Court Treaty Plant was built in nineteen eighty-five and was designed for one million gallons a day. At that time, the DEP permitted it for, uh, half a million gallons a day. Currently, we can only withdraw from the well there, uh, two hundred thousand gallons per day. So there's a delta there of about three hundred thousand gallons that we would like to get back. Um, I looked, I reviewed some of the historical data, and back in the nineties, we were actually getting close, uh, above four hundred thousand, maybe close to five hundred thousand. So what happens over time is the iron and manganese, which isn't really unusual for a plant like this with mineral problems, is the, the well screen gets clogged over time, and the soil formation around the screen also gets clogged, and it just slows down over time. So, um, we've redeveloped it a couple of times in, in my time here, last five, six years. And, uh, it helps, but then it just fades right off again, so, uh, that's the reason. That's the reason I'm presenting this now, is to try to get that capacity back. And, uh, this would be the first step in doing that, the, the test wells and, and the actual well installation and permitting and pump tests. So, uh, construction would be later, but this, this is, uh, this first step here would get us, um, um, permitted by DEP.
Mr. Moderator, if I might?
Yes, Dr. Grimm.
Very quickly, we, we added these in, you know, we were trying to be very limited on what we put onto this meeting, but we really felt that this elevated to a level of importance to get really moving on this as we want to maintain that level of capacity for services. This article and Article eighteen, uh, both, I think, are of critical importance to us and are somewhat time-sensitive. And that's why they were included in this particular, uh, full town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Grimm. All right, we do have several speakers here. Michael Hardman. When you, uh, unmute yourself, please, uh, state your name and precinct number, please. Just unmute yourself, Michael. We're giving you another couple of seconds, Michael, to kind of try to unmute yourself. Okay, we can come back to you. Uh, next up is Mr. Peter Banus.
I don't know why I keep popping up. I never signed into speech.
Peter, uh, you're going live here. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank.
Next up is, uh, Mr. Dan Pezia. Dan Pezia, when you're able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Okay, Bob.
Yes, Dan. Precinct number, please?
My hand was, should not have been up.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. We're gonna move on. Uh, Tony Souza? Tony Souza?
I am, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, you are, Mr. Souza. Name and precinct number, please?
Good evening, all. Uh, my name is Antonio Souza, precinct three. I think some of the questions were answered by Mr. McNulty. So this will be test wells, so we can install new wells, I assume? By reading the article, that's what we're trying to do, a study for new wells? To replace what we have or to subsidize the water we get now at the existing wells? Am I correct?
Through the moderator, yes, yes, Tony, you are. The, it would be what's called a satellite well to the original well.
So, okay, my next question is, we have an outside people doing this work. Am I correct?
Yes, a, um, engineering consultant, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McNulty. I'm all set, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Souza. Next up is Brian Holmes. Brian, when you have a chance to unmute yourself, and please state your name and precinct number.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Brian Holmes, precinct three. Through you, sir, to Mr. McNulty. Um, I just want to make sure I understand that this is a, uh, an augmentation of the existing well and that the exist, the existing well is now under capacity from what was predicted several years ago?
Through the moderator, Brian, yes, it is. It's, uh, to bring back the capacity that was lost over the last thirty-five years.
Thank you very much. Uh, good work on this, Mr. McNulty. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Next up is Scott Terrara.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to, um...
Precinct number Scott, please?
Oh, Scott Terrara, precinct two. Sorry about that, Mr.
Thank you.
Uh, through you to Superintendent McNulty. Phil, did, did anybody check into the, um, the question of the plume that was moving in that area? Check back in the records from, uh, DEP?
Uh, through, through you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, yes, Scott, we, um, we, we test the, um, the wells once a year for VOCs and SOCs, uh, volatile organics and synthetic organic compounds as well. Uh, that's just to, uh, to monitor if the plume ever reached that, that, uh, that station. And we've gotten no detects throughout, uh, at least my time here the last five, six years.
Um, I know you test the water, but the quality steel was, is on the corner of Buckley Road. And they had reported to us from two oh seven till two thousand and nine when I got off, and I'm sure Johnny Anzavino probably continued on after that. But that was like an ongoing thing. They had a, the, uh, the water draw machine trying to aerate all the stuff out and that. Supposedly that had moved further down because it was following the sewer main. And I'd hate to see a lot of money put into something. I know we need it, but I wouldn't like to see something built and then find out it's only like, you know, maybe a hundred feet away, and then it, it, it moves in. I had mentioned it to Tom Fitzgerald, that it was something to look into. And it's a whole, a whole case in itself. And it's, it's got a number, and all you have to do is look at it and find out if it's been cleared up or it hasn't been cleared up. But if you guys are comfortable, then I guess.
Yeah, I couldn't, yeah, the, uh, it has a DEP tracking number too. We can, you know, we, we can double-check that. I'm ninety-nine percent sure that's all cleared up. But I, I, we can, before we move forward with anything, I'll have, uh, I can check it myself or have our engineers check the status of the DEP file there. But, uh, we, as I said, we, we don't, we haven't detected any, uh, any of the, uh, volatile or synthetic compounds at, at the plant itself.
Yeah, that's good.
I think that original plume started in the late nineties, correct?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure, but they, there was two, two areas they were looking at, and one didn't go that way, and then they found out it was quality steel. And, um, the other one kind of, Brookfield kind of cleaned itself up, and it, it stagnated. It pulled the other way towards, um, um, Southworth Court that way. But, um, I was just wondering that, you know, it was, it was a hot item, and I didn't, never knew what the end result was. I don't know if anybody did. But it's something that I think somebody should look at to make sure that it's at a certain assessment where it's either, it didn't move anymore, it stopped, they were successful in, in dragging it back so that it didn't move. I just think it's something that some, something should be looked into because Tom was not even aware of it till I brought it up.
Thank you, Mr. Terrara. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Can you answer that?
Uh, yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. I, um, Scott, I will definitely check, recheck that. Um, I, I was aware of it, and I checked it in the past. You know, I checked all our own records, uh, our testing records. But, but, uh, I'll see what the status of the DEP, uh, tracking number is there for that, for that project, so. But, uh, I think we're in the clear, but I'll double-check it.
Thank you, both. We're gonna move on. Uh, next up is Arlene Kachopa. Arlene, when you have, when you get, get a chance to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Arlene Kachopa, precinct four. I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Motion's been moved in a second. I'm just gonna get. Motion's been moved in a second. I'm just gonna give a moment to Michael Hardman, if he's still out there. He was trying to say something at the time. I do recognize your, your motion to move the question, Aline Kachopa. Just take, give me one moment here. Is Michael Hardman still out there?
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, it was a mistake.
Okay, no problem. Just wanted to give you an opportunity. No problem. All right, we have, uh, one other person that would like to talk, just let everybody know. This is to move the question. Motion's been made by Aline Kachopa. Was there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, Cynthia. Sorry. Uh, it was seconded by Cynthia Walsh. All right, uh, we're gonna clear the raised hands. Once I get noticed that the all clear, all those who want to vote yes to move the question, please raise your hand now. Ten seconds. All right, can I get a count on the raised hands? All right, can we clear the hands, please? We have the raised hands. Okay, all those who vote no, please raise your hand now. This is obviously two-thirds vote. Is needed. Ten seconds. Okay, if I get a count on the raised hands, please. Thirteen. All right, uh, to move the question, it was yes, one oh eight, no, thirteen, yes, one oh eight, no, thirteen. It passed by two-thirds. So now we're gonna go back to Article seven, excuse me, seventeen on page twenty-eight. And this requires the two-thirds vote because it's a borrowing. Two-thirds vote is required because it's borrowing. All right, can we post the poll, please, when you're ready? Okay, the poll is on the screen. This is for Article seventeen, Pratt's Court Replacement Wells Investigation. Please vote now. All right, just ten seconds. Sure, Tom Council, go ahead. Oh, okay, you want to say on there, okay. All right, that's in the poll. Now let's reveal the results. All right, we have yes, one fourteen, sixteen, no, two abstentions. It passes by two-thirds. Article seventeen has passed by two-thirds. One fourteen, yes. Sixteen, no, two abstentions. Can I ask, do I have to need a, do I need to add a count for anybody, everybody accounted for? Yep, okay, thank you. Can we end the poll, please? Clear the poll. All right, we're gonna move to Article eighteen, which starts at the bottom of page twenty-eight in the warrant books. I gotta add, ask for Ed Trumpfield to read the motion and your report, Ed.
All right, we on?
Yes, you are, Ed. Go ahead.
Okay, Article eighteen, Pratt Court Roof Replacement. Proposed motion that the town vote to appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand dollars for a roof replacement at the Pratt's Court Water Filter Plant, including all incidental and related costs, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow such sums pursuant to general laws, chapter forty-four, section seven or eight, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And although these will be general obligation bonds of the town, it is anticipated that they will be repaid through the Water Enterprise Fund and further that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payments of costs approved by this vote in accordance with general laws, chapters forty-four, section twenty, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. Finance Committee voted fifteen to zero on September sixteenth to recommend the town meeting.
Thank you, Ed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gene Fleming. All right, Mr. McNulty? You gonna do a presentation here or just present on it?
I'll say a few words. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll say a few words.
Right ahead, sir.
Yes, generally speaking, you know, roofs are, the useful life is twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. And this roof here now is thirty-five years and it's, it's been leaking. We've, we've patched it multiple times. It's a flat membrane, membrane roof. The, the parent material is okay, but the seams are all, uh, the glue is just not sticking anymore. You can really literally pull it up with your fingers. So it's, it's, uh, it's actually been leaking on some critical equipment inside the station and we have it topped off at the moment for the, uh, for the last five months. So this, we're in desperate need of a new roof there, so. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, uh, speakers, next, first up is Stephanie Carrara. Stephanie, when you get unmuted, please state your name and precinct number, please. We're just, uh, Stephanie, can you unmute yourself, please? Just give it a moment, so she has a moment to unmute herself. Okay, that was an error. Okay, so next up, uh, Mr. Peter Banus. We're gonna welcome Peter Banus back. Mr. Banus, you wanna mute yourself? I don't know if that was a mistake or not, Peter. Just let us know.
I have no idea why this keeps going around.
Okay, Peter, I'll just check in with you from time to time.
You know I don't want to speak.
All right, thank you, Mr. Banus. Uh, next up is Cynthia Walsh. Cynthia, you can unmute yourself and you can talk. We're just waiting on Cynthia to unmute yourself.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct two.
Yes, Cynthia, go ahead.
I move the question.
Uh, this time, I haven't heard anybody speak forward against this, so I'm gonna put you on hold, Cynthia. Uh, moderator's discretion. Next up is George Delensky.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Delensky, precinct two. Quick question, how many companies bid on this project, please?
I, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, uh, we, we got one bid from our ongoing services contractor for our town roofs. The idea was to originally pay for it out of budget, but, um, I, I, I think, I'm not sure why it got denied through the budget process, but it did. So it was recommended to go to town meeting and that's where we are.
So what you're saying is that nobody else bid on this, just, we just went to one person, not any local roofing companies or anything?
Well, we, we, um, we went out, the procurement went out to bid for all, for roofing contractor and this, the one, the quote, the quote we have is for the, the roofing contractor who won the original bid. That's.
Okay. Will this include, uh, prevailing wages for, uh, the workers?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
At all, Mr. Delensky?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Lanninghan.
John Lanninghan, precinct one. Uh, I concur with Cynthia, move the question.
All right, all right, uh, I just want everybody to know there's four people that still want to talk, so I will take Cynthia's motion now to move the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gene Fleming. To move the question, that means cutting off debate and there is one, two, three, four, five people in line, I believe, to talk. All right, we're gonna, uh, clear the hands right now. Once I get notified that the hands are clear, we can, all set. All right, all those that want to vote yes to move the question, cut off the bait, raise your hand now, please. And this is a two-thirds vote. Uh, a lot of people have asked in the Q and A if it's two-thirds. It is two-thirds. It's in all the different rules. I even looked it up online, Robert's Rules of Order, town meeting time and various other parliamentary procedures. To move the question or cut off debate is two-thirds. All right, uh, five seconds for the hands raised there. All right, now can I get a, a count on the raised hands? Okay, can we clear the hands, please? And once we have the hands cleared, okay, all those who oppose, vote no, raise your hand now. Ten seconds. Okay, can I have a count on raised hands, please? Eleven. All right, uh, motion to cut off debate passes, one hundred yes, eleven no. It passes by two-thirds. All right, we're gonna go right to the article. That's Article eighteen. Mr. McNulty, would you like to summarize, a quick summary?
Um.
Up to you. Give you a moment.
Eighteen is the roof, which I already summarized.
Okay, okay, we're gonna, uh, thank you, Mr. McNulty. We're gonna go ahead and, and ask for the poll to be presented before us to take the vote. This is two-thirds required as the motion shows right there on the screen. This is for Pratt's Court Roof Replacement, two-thirds required because it's a borrowing. Please vote now. Ten seconds. Okay. If we could end the poll and reveal the results, please. All right, you see the results there? Yes, one twenty-seven, no, five, zero abstention. Article eighteen passes by a clear two-thirds majority. Um, one twenty-seven, yes, five, no, zero abstentions. All right, we're gonna move on. Article nineteen. On Article nineteen, I believe, uh, s- select person, uh, Select Chair Christine Howe, could you read the motion for us if you're available?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Once we bring it up on the screen? This is for the Muddy Pond Utility Pool easement license. We need Article nineteen on the screen, please. Here we go.
Okay, I make a motion, I make a motion that the town vote to approve Article nineteen as printed in the warrant.
For a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gene Fleming. I'll just read the Intergovernmental Relations Committee report. As you can see right on your screen, it's voted, they voted six to zero to recommend the town meeting. Municipal Operations Committee report voted six to zero to recommend approval to town meeting. All right, I'm gonna ask for Mr. McNulty for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This, uh, the, and for those who aren't aware, we're, we're building a replacements, um, well station to replace the original Station One that's located on Central Street. It's, uh, has a nineteen, eighteen ninety-two, uh, date on top of it, uh, brick building, historical. Um, that's, the water will no longer be pumped out of there. It'll be pumped up by, uh, Muddy Pond out onto Bay Road. Um, the project's underway. It's probably sixty, sixty-five percent complete. It'd probably be, um, completed around January. Um, the purpose of this article is simply to allow the, um, the selectmen, you give them the authority to, um, to grant easements to the utility companies, uh, namely, uh, Eversource, which is Sharon, they're the first pole coming across the street, and then an additional pole, uh, Stoughton National Grid. So it's, it's simply to allow the, those two utility, utility companies to install the utility poles for power to the stations. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McNulty. Okay, we have a couple of speakers. Um, Ms. Julie Gito. Okay. Julie Gito. Give you another couple of seconds. Unmute yourself. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, Peter Banus. I'm gonna welcome Peter Banus back. See if that's an error. Mr. Banus. Okay, we're gonna move on. I'm told that, uh,
Yeah, move on. Uh, I, I don't know why it keeps popping up, but.
That's okay. Welcome again, Mr. Banus. Good to see you again. All right, we're gonna move on. Uh, I'm told that select member Joe McCrisky would like to speak, I believe. Joe McCrisky? If we do want to speak, uh, just unmute yourself.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I think that may have been a, uh, something on the other end. I, I don't need to speak at this time. Thank you.
Okay, no problem, Mr. McCrisky. Thank you. Tony Souza. When you get a chance, Tony, just unmute yourself. State your name and precinct number.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. McNault.
Your precinct number, Tony?
I'm sorry, Antonio Souza, precinct three.
Thank you, go ahead.
Uh, did I hear correctly that pump station of the facility on Central Street is gonna become obsolete?
Uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, yes, Tony, that's, uh, it's, it's, hasn't pumped water about six months now.
Uh, thank you very much. The other thing is, this is a no cost, so should, this is a no-brainer to authorize the board of selectmen to grant the authorization to have these poles installed, so. Now just go ahead.
Yeah, through Mr., through you, Mr. Moderator, uh, Tony, the, um, yes, it's just procedural, no cost, right?
Okay. I make a motion to move the question.
Uh, you can't do both, Tony. You only can either speak, make a statement, ask a question, but you, and you can't. We're gonna move on. Thank you, Mr. Souza. Cynthia Walsh? Unmute yourself when you have the opportunity and state your precinct name, name and precinct.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct two, on behalf of my compadre in precinct three, I move the question.
All right, question's been moved. That's a cutoff debate. Uh, we have one more speaker, but I'm gonna accept your motion. And it's up to the town meeting reps to determine whether we cut off debate or not. All right, so once we get the, once they get the. All right, so once we get the, once they get the signal that the raised hands are cleared, we'll take a vote on cutting off the bait. All right, we lowering hands? Are we all set? Okay, all those who want to vote yes on cutting off the bait, raise your hand now, please. Was there a second on that, by the way?
Second.
Second. Ten more seconds. Okay, can I get a count on the raised hands, please? All right, can we clear the hands again, please? And please let me know when the hands are clear. Okay, all those who oppose, please raise your hands now. Ten seconds. Can I get a count, please? Seven. Motion to cut off the bait passes. One thirteen, yes, seven, no. Passes by a clear two-thirds majority. All right, we're going to go back to Article nineteen, which appears on, uh, page twenty-nine. Once we're ready, can we put the poll up to vote on this, please? This is just a simple majority. As you see, the polls before us, Article nineteen, the Muddy Pond Utility Pool Easement and License. Please vote accordingly. Ten seconds. Okay, can we end the poll, please, and reveal the results? All right, Article nineteen, yes, one twenty-eight, no, zero, two abstentions. Article nineteen, the motion passes, one twenty-eight, zero, two. All right, we're going to move on to Article twenty. Appears, it starts on the page, the bottom of page twenty-nine of your warrant books. Uh, Ed Trumpfield, please read the motion, please.
Turn me on.
Oh, you're on now, sir.
Okay. All right, Article twenty, Heron Crossing Pilot Agreement. And for those who may not know, pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. Proposed motion that the town vote to approve Article twenty as printed in the warrant.
Right, they're just doing a sermon at nine o'clock.
The Finance Committee voted fifteen to zero on September sixteenth to recommend the town meeting as set forth in the proposed motion.
You want, well, you're on, Ed. Do you want to read your Finance Committee report?
Yes, we voted fifteen to zero on September sixteenth to recommend the town meeting as set forth in the proposed motion.
Thank you, Ed. Can I get a second on the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Gene Fleming. All right, we should have Scott Reamer, I believe it's Reamer, pronounced, uh, from the... You see on, Scott Reamer? Yeah, there's also a presentation, I'm told. Scott Reamer, can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm here. My name is Scott Reamer. I am with Hexagon Energy, Mr. Chairman. Uh, ladies and gentlemen of Town Meeting, good to see you all again. You may or may not remember back in spring of twenty nineteen, before COVID hit us all. Um, I was up with you in person for a number of these meetings. So now, um, a little bit of a, a digital reunion, you could almost say here. And I apologize, my wife's birthday was yesterday, so I have the happy birthday stuff up here, so ignore that. But we had a good time. It was a great, great bit of a time. Now, I think this should hopefully be a pretty quick and easy conversation, uh, for us this evening. Back in twenty nineteen, uh, we worked with the town, the Select Board, the Planning Board, and a variety of, basically everyone in the town to work on allowing, um, a zoning pilot change to allow a two-megawatt solar array project to be built just north of the Campanelli Industrial Park. Um, we had, because of that vote, the town meeting issued, uh, to, to allow for the zoning of this, we've gone through and now completely and fully permitted this project. It's, it's ready to roll forward. The last step of what we're going through now is, is finalizing the pilot agreement. Um, if you wouldn't mind moving to the next slide real quick. There, yeah, there we go, thanks. Uh, this is just what I was telling you just a second ago. Two megawatts, that's, um, it's going to sit on about ten acres, located just north of the Campanelli Park. We worked with the town over twenty nineteen and somewhat of twenty twenty, but mostly twenty nineteen. We're getting ready to, uh, to move forward. Now, um, next slide, if you don't mind. Um, so what, what we're going for tonight is the payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot program. Uh, pilots for solar arrays started off because there was some confusion around whether or not to tax them as personal property or real property. So what, what eventually happened was that the state issued guidance that they should be handled through a pilot agreement instead of direct, uh, taxes. Uh, what the pilot does is it, it's not a discount. It's actually just a reliable cash flow where, uh, presumed property rates and, or presumed property tax rates are taken into account, increases are taken into account. And we, as the developer, and you as the town, are able to, to put together a twenty-year reliable cash flow, um, for how this is, is going to, um, move forward, you know, based on whether taxes go up or down, or even changes in the law of how the state taxes these things, or allows for these things to be taxed, um, we'll have a predictable cash flow with it. We, in addition to the pilot payment, will continue to also pay real property taxes. So the standard property tax rate will be covered in addition to these pilot, um, this pilot payment. Next slide, please. Uh, let's see. Yep, so what we're, what we're offering is to pay thirty-five thousand dollars per year for twenty years, um, uh, in, in this pilot payment. That's the number I had used, if, depending on how, how great your memory is, which mine is not always so great. But back in twenty nineteen, that's the number I said to the town in our, in our hearings that, uh, this project would pay, uh, and, and the revenue it would generate to the town. Um, later analysis, when we actually had everything, you know, starting to be buttoned up, we used the state's estimator for what this, what this thing should technically be. And it came back that it could have been around thirty-two and a half thousand. But because in our conversation, we had said thirty-five thousand, and because the pilot is, is a good faith negotiation, we decided to just stick with our original offer of thirty-five thousand dollars per year. Um, next slide, please. So we've already gone through the pilot, um, conversation with, with a variety of members of the town board. We've spoken with the town assessors, and they've approved this. Um, we've spoken with town council. That was, um, Mr. Holland, I believe, from KP Law, is who we were, were working with, with that, um, representing the town. And then the Select Board has already voted to approve the terms and the agreement. And the last step remaining for this is for Town Meeting to vote to authorize the Select Board to, um, to enter into the pilot agreement. And we're ready to go and get this project going and get, get some cash flowing to the town. That's all I've got on this. Um, I would love to hear any questions, and thank you guys for your time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator and everybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Scott Reamer. Uh, Dr. Robin Grim, did you want to add anything to that?
I just want to add that, um, Mr. Reamer and the representatives from the company have been excellent to work with, continue to be excellent to work with, and they have certainly negotiated in good faith, uh, despite the number coming back a little lower, that thirty-two number, they did remain at the thirty-five. Um, all involved on our staff were very comfortable with that number, with the project, and with this agreement.
Hey, Dr. Grim. All right, uh, Mr. Cave, do I have any speakers? That's all right, just checking. Uh, Mr. Tony Souza?
Antonio Souza, Precinct Three. Did I hear correct, Mr. Moderator, they're going to continue to pay property taxes plus thirty-five thousand dollars a year for twenty years? Am I correct on that?
Uh, Dr. Grim, would you like to add to that, or? Who can answer that for us, I guess?
Mr. Reamer, I think, can actually, or Mr. Tisdale, I think Mr. Reamer probably can answer it more specific, more specifically.
Thank you.
Yeah, man. Um, thank you for the question, sir. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, yes, we will, in addition to the thirty-five thousand dollars per year, continue to pay the, um, the base real, real property tax as well. So that's typically been about ten thousand per year, um, and maybe a little bit more, but approximately that. And that's in addition to the pilot.
Thank you, Mr. Reamer.
At all, Tony?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. All right, next up, we have, we're going to welcome back Peter Banus. Just give him the opportunity in case he does have a question. All right, assume he's...
Passed.
All right, he should answer a question since you're here. That's okay, Peter. Don't worry. I just want to give you the opportunity.
Do you want me to ask something? No.
That's okay.
Sounds like a great plan. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Cynthia Walsh? Cynthia, while you're able, unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number. You're unmuted now.
Uh, Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Two, move the question, please.
Okay, moving the question. That means cutoff debate. Do we have any other speakers? I do have two other speakers. It's moderator's discretion. I got to move forward with cutting off the bait and leave it up to the town meeting reps if they choose to cut off the bait. There's two speakers in line, just letting everybody know. All right, we're going to move forward to cutoff debate. We have to vote on it. It's two-thirds vote required to cutoff debate. We're going to clear the raised hands. And once I'm told the raised hands are clear, we'll move forward. We're good. All those who want to cut off the bait, please raise your hand now. Needs a two-thirds. Okay, can we, uh, get a count on the raised hands? All right, can we clear the raised hands? Can we get a second on the raised hands? Uh, on the, uh, yep, Gene Fleming? Gene Fleming seconded that. Okay, all those, do I get a, can we clear the raised hands? Can we clear them? All right, just let me know when they're clear. We'll... Okay, raise your hand to vote no. Ten seconds. Okay, can I get a count on the raised hands? Twenty-two. At two-thirds? Okay, uh, raised hand, uh, it's yes, ninety-seven, no, twenty-two, passes by, uh, two-thirds. So the debate is cut off. All right, we're going to go back to, uh, Article twenty, and we're going to, we're going to put up a poll. I should say, does, um, Scott Reamer want to summarize anything? From the Dr. Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nothing else to add, except that I've enjoyed working with the town. Your staff is, is wonderful. I've worked in towns across Massachusetts and the country, and I think, uh, Stoughton staff is some of the, the best that I've gotten a chance to work with, and you guys are very lucky. So thank you.
Well, we know that. Thank you very much, Mr. Reamer. Appreciate those comments. All right, uh, when we're ready, let's put up the poll for Article twenty. Okay, the poll appears before you. Please vote accordingly. Okay, ten seconds. And as it says on the motion, just a majority, simple majority. Can we end the poll, please? Uh, we have yes, one twenty-three, no, five, two abstentions. Article twenty, the motion passes, one twenty-three to five to two. All right, we're going to move to Article twenty-one. This is the TIF. Uh, this is on page thirty of your warrant books. I'm going to ask Mr. Ed Trumpfield to read the motion, please.
Okay, are we on?
Yes, Ed. Please go ahead.
Article twenty-one. A TIF which stands for a Tax Increment Financing Agreement with TSC Schuman Twenty-Two LLC and Globe Composite Solutions LLC. Proposed motion that the town vote to approve Article twenty-one as printed in the warrant. The Finance Committee voted ten to five to recommend the town meeting as set forth in the proposed motion.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, seconded by Gene Fleming. Gene, could you say it a little louder?
Second.
Okay, just so everybody can hear you. Seconded by Gene Fleming. All right, just give me a moment here to look at my notes here. Um, we have a Michael Dyson from the company. Michael, if you're on, could you, uh, introduce yourself to the town meeting reps? Mike Dyson? We'll give him a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, this is Mike Dyson.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you very much for, uh, taking the time to, uh, hear our petition tonight. Uh, I represent, uh, Globe Composite Solutions. Uh, we are a manufacturer in town. We're like the second largest manufacturer in town located, uh, in the Campanelli Industrial Park. We're asking for a, um, consideration for, uh, a TIF for an expansion that the company is, uh, proposing, and I believe there's a presentation, if you could put that up.
Up, sir. I don't know if you can see it. It's up.
I can.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, if we can go to the next slide. So, uh, we've been around since eighteen ninety. Uh, we've been in the town of Stoughton for about five years. We design and manufacture essential components. Uh, the vast majority of our business is used on nuclear submarines, uh, produced by General Dynamics and Huntington Ingalls. In addition to that, uh, we do make products for UPS, FedEx, the postal service, and our manufacturing, uh, encompasses design, material formulation, machining, and full-scale production. Slide, please. Um, here's a snapshot of some of those, uh, industries. The defense industry represents about ninety-five percent of our revenue. Um, next slide, please. Uh, some household names that you're all familiar with. Uh, these are customers of ours. Uh, next slide, please. So we're sole source to ninety-six percent of our customers, which means that we have provided a unique solution that they can only acquire from us. Um, and due to customer demands, uh, we're seeing a need to expand, and it's important for us to try to stay under one roof. Currently, we occupy, uh, about seventy-one thousand square feet at two hundred Schuman Ave and an additional thirty thousand square feet in Avon. And what we're looking to do is consolidate and put everything under one roof with an eighty thousand square foot extension, uh, onto our existing building. We go to the next slide. So the low roof to the left represents the, uh, portion of the building occupied by Globe. Uh, to the right is occupied by another company, uh, ManCom, who provides products to the MBTA. Uh, so we're currently only roughly half of that building. Uh, we don't own the building, we lease it. But we're, uh, looking to expand by another eighty thousand square feet, which will represent... But we're, uh, looking to expand by another eighty thousand square feet, which would represent ten million dollars in hard and soft costs and about five million dollars of personal property that we'd put in there. And as part of this agreement, we've agreed to make sure that we add at least fifteen jobs, and we, we don't see any problem with doing that or more. Next slide, please. So we have eighty-five full-time employees. Uh, we have, uh, at least ten new jobs taking place in the next probably twenty months and more after. Um, our workload goes out till twenty fifty. Uh, so we have a pretty predictable cadence of production. Um, some of the job skills that, uh, are housed within our four walls, engineering, chemists, lab technicians, assemblers, quality control folks, office and administration. Um, and we're gonna be adding to those folks. Um, we certainly provide a preference to veterans and certainly to any residents in the town of Stoughton. The company is committed to making sure that we, uh, pay very competitive salaries and benefits, and we are, uh, also funding tuition reimbursement for all of our employees so that we can help them grow, uh, their personal abilities as a result of working with us. Next slide, please. You know, the company has frequent visitors, uh, from the Navy, from the shipyards. Uh, those folks are, uh, housed in hotels here in town. Uh, we, we take those individuals to restaurants in town, use catering services from the town, as well as, uh, encourage our employees to use local retail establishments. Um, one of the things that we try to do is be a good corporate citizen. Uh, company invests in the community through education, whether it be STEM, uh, scholarship programs that we offer, uh, to our employees and initiatives like helping support robotics, things like that. Next slide, please. So some of the key benefits to the town is, uh, better utilization of the property. Um, the site is a little bit of a challenge with some ledge and some construction obstacles, which uh, makes this site a little bit more expensive to develop on. And realistically, without this project, uh, it's unlikely that those, uh, spaces would be used for future development. Um, we see a benefit in generating some permit fees and some other related fees as part of, uh, using town sewer and improving, uh, sort of some of the traffic that comes through town, uh, as a result of our visitors. Next slide.
Okay, good evening. My name is Lynn Tokarczyk. I am government. Good, good evening. Uh, I am Government Tax Incentives Consultant for, uh, the company for Globe Composite Solutions. And, uh, so just to follow up, I'll be talking a little bit about the tax incentive. But first of all, I'd like to, we'd like to thank Robin Grim and Mark Tisdale and the entire TIF team for their support of this TIF proposal. We'd also like to thank the Stoughton Select Board and Finance Committee for their support as well. Uh, we enjoyed having the local officials visit the company recently and tour the facility. Um, so we're very pleased to see the turnout for that. And then just, um, earlier this month, uh, back at, back in early October, uh, we, the company presented an information session. So thank you to those who attended. So right on this slide, uh, talking about tax incentives, the company is in the process of applying for a TIF, Tax Increment Financing. And this is an economic development tool under the state's Economic Development Center Program, and this tool is used to attract and retain businesses. This is a tool to generate new tax revenue and jobs to the town. And so essentially, a TIF, the town doesn't lose any existing tax revenue. The town continues to receive one hundred percent of the real estate tax revenue, and it's based on the new projected assessed value of the property as a result of this proposed expansion and then generating new real estate taxes. So essentially, it's a discount on future taxes. The town doesn't lose a dime on the existing taxes. Next slide, please. So, very high level, just, I will give you a snapshot of the TIF proposal. Um, this is a ten-year TIF proposal, and a TIF can be anywhere, a minimum of five years, a maximum of twenty years, in any one year, a minimum of one percent and a maximum of one hundred percent in any one year. So the, the building, um, as Mike mentioned in the slides, the bill, the total building is approximately one hundred and fifty-seven thousand square feet. Of that space, the company occupies approximately seventy-one thousand square feet. And what the new proposed expansion, again, is eighty thousand square feet. The, it, the, the taxes that the town is generating right now on the entire building, the one hundred and fifty-seven thousand square feet is approximately two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars annually. So the town will continue to like, to collect that. There will be no loss in this annual tax revenue. The company is paying approximately, based on their seventy-one thousand square feet, they're paying approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars a year. With the new proposed eighty thousand square feet, that is going to generate in assessed value of approximately five point six million dollars with a new tax of approximately one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And the percentages, um, as you can see, the, over the ten-year period start with one hundred percent, and then they narrow down to thirty-five percent, um, in the later years. And the column in blue is the taxes that the, the company would save over a ten-year period, so approximately eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. But the very important column is the column to the right of that, which is the net new revenue. And again, this is all over ten years. The net new revenue that the town would be collecting as a result of this project is approximately five hundred and seventy-four fifty-five dollars. And then the taxes, uh, in the ninth column, second to last column, of the taxes that the company would be obligated to pay is what they're currently paying, and then the new taxes, including the TIF. So the very last column is what the town will be collecting. The base, the existing taxes, one hundred percent of the building, plus the new taxes with the TIF, so that will generate approximately two point seven million dollars. And, and again, a TIF, the town doesn't lose any existing tax revenue. It's a way, this is a tool for the town to generate new tax revenue. Next slide, please. So we felt it was very compelling also to note some of the additional fees uh, that in revenues that the town would be generating, such as permit fees, uh, electrical and, uh, site plan review fees, and then some of the other infrastructure, the water and sewer, uh, generating approximately one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in new, uh, revenues to the town. So this really gives you a snapshot of the TIF proposal and, and again, what, what, what a TIF is and, and the substantial benefits, um, coming into the town with jobs, retaining jobs, a manufacturing company in town that has their corporate headquarters and helping them to grow and expand and bring new tax revenue to the town and new jobs. So thank you so much for your consideration of this article, and we hope you support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Dr. Grim, did you wanna say anything? Or Mark Tisdale? Add to that?
Yeah, very briefly. Um, I just, just wanna emphasize my support for this article. This is, uh, a company that's a, a, a great manufacturing company to have in town. This expansion does not have any negative implications for traffic or surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, and the other thing to point out again is that they don't own this property, but they're going to invest twelve or fifteen million dollars in a property that they don't own, improve the value of the property significantly. And even if down the road they were to leave, we would have a much higher valued property that we would be taxing on going forward. So no matter what, just the investment in the building eventually, uh, benefits the town as a whole. Secondly, um, Lynn brought up the, uh, permitting and the estimated fees. In a year where some of our revenues might be a little bit off going into this next year with, with restaurant and, and room taxes, this is actually money that we had not budgeted in, uh, as we weren't aware this would be coming in when we first produced the budget, and we certainly didn't know how town meeting would accept this. But if town meeting approves this, much of this revenue on the permit fees will happen within the next year or so, and, and, and that's great revenue for us to bring in. Again, they're a good partner. Um, this is not a losing of taxes for us. It's just how quickly we implement a new tax. We did come back with a negotiation. This wasn't, um, they originally put a number out, we negotiated, we came to, uh, an agreement where it phased in just a little bit faster, uh, or a little, a little more rapidly through that same ten-year span. So again, I just wanna show my support for this. This is a, a company that we very much wanna keep in Stoughton and have them expand in Stoughton. Um, and the risk is so minimal for the town because we're not, it is, there is no risk for the town. We're not losing any money, and we're actually gaining the value of a property forever. Um, so thank you. I will, uh, let Mark add a couple of words.
Awesome. Uh, thank you, Robin.
Just briefly, because you guys are running close here to ten minutes.
Yeah, I'll be real. I think I'll be pretty quick. Um, I think this is a great project. It brings in the additional tax sewer and water revenue. Uh, the sewer, you know, model that was presented at town meeting last year maximized development to occur within fifteen to twenty years. We already have one property, you know, investing fifteen million dollars before a sewer pipe was even installed, so I think that's great. The company's expanded the building by eighty thousand square feet, and they're putting it over the existing leaching field because of the sewer will be there. Um, I won't, I won't comment about the permitting fees. Uh, Robin nailed that pretty good, and it was in the presentation. But I think this is great because it's only a ten-year TIF. A lot of our TIFs in the past have been in twenty years. So, uh, we have some flexibility. The building will be eighty thousand square feet forever, though, and will be always collecting taxes from the eighty thousand square feet for many, many more years than the TIF. Uh, one, one last point to clarify, uh, through the process. A lot of people think we're losing taxes. Uh, that's, that's absolutely incorrect. We're actually keeping all the existing taxes and averaging about sixty thousand dollars per year over the next ten years in additional taxes. I, I think it's a great project, and it aligns with the goals and objectives from the sewer projects.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, just a couple of comments from the moderator. Uh, on the Q and A, people asked a few questions, uh, presentations that appear this evening. We'll try to get those on the virtual front table tomorrow. So any presentations that you saw, saw this evening, we'll get them up on the virtual front table so everybody can watch them. Again, if you so desire, we'll download them. Also, uh, there was a question on point of information. They feel that the moderator might be cutting off the bait too fast. I think it's moderator's discretion. If, uh, there's plenty of time to raise your hand to get on the speaker list. If you delay, um, someone jumps in front of you, there's just plenty of time, I believe, to get on the speaker list. Like, right now, we have, uh, eleven people on the speaker list right now that raised their hand. We'll get to those people in a moment. But, uh, I'm trying to be as fair as I can. Uh, sometimes if there's the, the layout there and someone, you know, nobody's in the line, in the queue to, you know, speak, someone gets in there, finally moves a question. Town meeting reps still have the final decision. They vote accordingly. You need a two-thirds vote to cut off debate. So even if I make a mistake, the moderator doesn't make mistakes very often, but if the moderator does make an error somewhere along the line, it's up to the town meeting reps to vote on that, and they have to vote a two-thirds majority to cut off debate. That's all I wanna say, in full fairness. Thank you. Let's move on. The first speaker on Article twenty-one is Joseph McCrisky. And Joseph, uh, member of the select board, when you get a chance, uh, unmute yourself, please state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe McCrisky from Precinct Five. I am not an elected member of town meeting, so I won't have a vote, but I am a member of the select board and strongly support this project. Um, I was not in favor of all the terms of the, uh, the sewer project when it came to the betterment agreements and, uh, and voted against it, but not, uh, against the support of the need for the sewer system for the town and the importance, uh, of this Campanelli Industrial Park. I've been down the park personally over the last few weeks, uh, following the meeting at Globe, which was so insightful and such a, a, a good presentation, uh, that I believe this is the type of business we wanna keep in town and use it as a role model for future businesses. Uh, there's a lot of potential in the Campanelli Industrial Park. Uh, I have met with, uh, three businesses since then, uh, that I had known over the past years, and they as well wanna do something down, you know, down the road. Uh, we need somewhere in town where we can count on providing more tax-generated revenue. Uh, there's a lot of businesses that go into certain areas, but they don't give us the taxes in return. They utilize property in different ways, but they don't get us the high-end tax dollars that we need. This is a way to get it. The TIF allows the company to grow within their means, and it allows us to keep the business in town and grow with them. And when we send that message, I believe that's what we need to do that Stoughton struggles with in past years. There's just been so much negative that we need to promote the positive. And as the real estate people had said when they had meetings in town, is that this is exactly what commercial developers are looking for, is the opportunity to work together as a team and do great things for our town, but we're also servicing the business community. And don't forget, folks, we have great access right off of Park Street to the highway, uh, for Route twenty-four, and that's a great marketable campaign. The last time we did anything like this was probably when we opened up Technology Way, which started out as a swamp with a developer that went to work with the town and bought the lots as they were being built, and then turned them over to private investors and private companies. That's what brought us Reebok and all the buildings that are up there now. That's all tax-generating revenue that started by working with the commercial developers for the good of the town. So I hope the town meeting members will vote for this article. It's a good article for us, and it's gonna give us back dividends that we can't count on right now. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for recognizing me.
Crisky, all right, moving on, we have Kristen Vale. Kristen, when you, can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Uh, Kristen Vale, Precinct Five. I'm sorry, that was an accident.
Oh, no problem. That's okay. Thank you for letting us know. All right, uh, I'm just reminding everybody, and not the point, I'm not singling anybody out, but just, you know, speakers have three minutes, and I'll have to cut in if you go over the three minutes, just to give you a warning there. Uh, next up is Scott Carrara. Scott, when you can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Carrara, Precinct Two. Um, I wanna extend, um, thanks to, uh, Mark Tisdale and Dr. Grim for putting together a good town representation to meet with this business. Um, I'd just like to say that this company is solid. It's a, it's a business Stoughton can be proud of. They have made comments to the fact that they wanna hire Stoughton residents. Um, they have committed to, uh, quality of people. They have high-tech and assembly tech people. They're gonna put in an eighty thousand square foot, uh, eighty, eighty thousand square foot addition. And, uh, you couldn't ask for a better area for them to do it. We were waiting to see if this sewer extension project was gonna generate anything, and thank God that we split them and we went this way so that the target area was this area, and we'll see who else jumps on board. But the TIF shows when it's put together right and the info is provided, it's an easy thing to look at. A lot of people can say, do it, but the numbers speak for themselves. And again, I've worked on TIFs before in another capacity for the town, and this just makes a lot of sense. To hang on to a company like this, made in America, doing business in America, wh- what's, what's better for Stoughton? I mean, we were gonna have a Sikorsky helicopter company in another area town, but everybody freaked out and thought we were gonna become a target to the world, so they drove it out of town. We have to open our arms and say, this is what we wanted. This is where our tax dollars are targeted. Let's see what we can get back for it. And I, I, again, I thank Mr. Tisdale. I know how far he's gone. I've spoken to him several times. And, uh, thank you to this company for stepping up. That's all, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carrara. Uh, I have about ten people still in line. Just wanna let everybody know. Next up is David Laurie. Mr. Laurie, when you can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm, I'm now on the mic. Thank you very much for your.
Go ahead, please.
And, um, I guess this is a question through you to the, uh, town engineer. There was years, months, terrific work put into the sewer project in which many PowerPoint presentations were put together. The Finance Committee reviewed terrific projections on how much revenue is gonna come into the town because of the sewer. And are, are our numbers gonna be affected? I wanna understand if the numbers will be affected that we were counting on from the sewer investment, which is the betterment version. We're putting seventy-five percent of the betterment on the town side. And there was gonna be a return based on the projects that were coming to that Campanelli area. How much did they change?
Okay, can someone answer that for Mr. Laurie?
Can, can you hear me, Bob?
Yes, Mr. Tisdale. Yes, Mr. Tisdale. Go right ahead.
All right. So I had to sign out with my phone. My, I had some Wi-Fi issues here on my computer. I didn't catch the whole question from Mr. Laurie.
Well, it's, it's kind of a two-part, it's kind of a two-part question through you, Mr. Moderator, is that you've got the, this project in front of us, the TIF, but there were, there's many different businesses in Campanelli that are, you know, eligible to take advantage of sewer. But when the town just voted in June, four months ago, to pay 75% of the betterment. In exchange for that, there was a presentation on how much revenue was going to come in from the projects that were going to upgrade the use, the use of each of the properties in Campanelli. How much does our, how much does that chart of, of the growth that we're going to get in revenue be affected by the 10-year period that this TIF represents? Does it affect any of the slides that were presented on the return on investment from the sewer project?
I, I think to answer your question, Dave, we're essentially right on track. This is the first project. Within the first three years, we're projecting a certain amount of revenue. I can't remember that, you know, from memory, but I want to say somewhere around 100,000. This project by itself is 60,000 just in taxes and then more revenue from sewer and water revenue. I think another 5 and 10,000 per year for that. So I think we're falling right in line with it. I do know that there's several other businesses that are interested in expanding their businesses. Once the sewer's in, I have, I have letters from them. And I've actually used their letters for reference in some of the grants that I'm applying for. So I think we're on track. We're moving in the right direction.
Does anybody who, are these projects that are coming through, are they asking for a TIF as well?
No, nobody's mentioned a TIF.
Okay.
Other than, other than this project.
All right. So I'm also with the Q and A. Just a final statement through you, Mr. Moderator, is that, you know, we, we just made, this would be the first great project that came through and it's wonderful that it's coming through. But coming right off the heels of an investment that we just made to attract revenue, it's, I just wonder how many companies in line behind this project are going to expect the same kind of TIF agreement? And how much does that affect all the great revenue that we were anticipating from our sewer investment? So I, that's the only concern that I have. So I, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that, that this does offset the growth that we were counting on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dr. Grimm, did you?
Yeah, I want to quickly respond to that. It, it is not, it doesn't really offset the growth that we were anticipating. Again, there is no loss of revenue here. This is an increase in revenue. The TIF is just simply the rate of increase of the revenue. I just want to be clear on that. And as far as other companies lining up for TIF, that's a fair question. And they have to comply with many components that the Commonwealth requires for this to even happen. So they would have to meet a set of criteria and we would have to go through the same process with all of them. And to be honest with you, would I support future TIFs if they offer this kind of a benefit to the town, including $182,000 in estimated fees and additional revenues and an investment in a building that we will permanently see a property value increase? Yeah, I, I might actually support those too, particularly when we are not losing any revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. Okay, we're going to move on. We have 11 people still wish to speak on this article. Next up is Joseph Scardino. Mr. Scardino, when you can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please. You're unmuted. Joe, go ahead, please. Mr. Scardino, you should be able to unmute yourself. I'm told you just start speaking right now, you'll be fine. Give him a couple more seconds. We can come back. All right, we'll come back to Mr. Scardino. Mr. Bane, this is on the list, but I believe that was an error. Peter Brown, you're listed as Liz Norton. I believe that's Peter Brown from the other night. Peter Brown.
Yes.
Identify yourself, please, and state your name and precinct.
Peter Brown, Precinct 2.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I had several questions, but actually most of them were answered. So, you know, I obviously support these types of endeavors if the town has benefited as well. And in this case, I believe it is. I do want to ask just one question through you, Mr. Moderator, to someone who can answer. There was two ti, two mentions of jobs, potential jobs. One was 10 and then 15. I don't think that's a, a large amount of job increase for the town of Stoughton, but how are we going to track that and monitor that? I, I remember Amazon coming in and promising a number of jobs. I know one person that works there. I just want to be certain that there will, there will be opportunity for town folks to be employed at this great company and everything else was answered. So I'll leave that at that. Thank you.
Can I answer that for Mr. Brown? I think the question was how are we going to track employees? Am I getting that right?
Yeah, yeah, more, more, more so I want to ensure that, that, that people are getting the opportunity from the town of Stoughton. We were told a great number of jobs would be provided and even though this number is only 15, how will we manage to know this information? Because I was very unsuccessful trying to track down the number of jobs that Amazon had promised and never had delivered. So I just want to be certain that if, you know, we're agreeing to this, and I think it's great, that there is some potential for Stoughton folks. And how will we know this? Will they provide us with a, you know, an update or some sort of information? That's all. Thank you.
Through the, through, through the moderator?
Hey, Dr. Grimm.
Yeah, they will be required to provide updates. And the other thing is that they've also agreed to do outreach within Stoughton, advertise in Stoughton types of outreach programs or newspapers or on my Facebook page. They have agreed to work with us and trying to advertise these positions. One of the challenges is if, if people in Stoughton who do or don't apply meet qualifications, don't meet qualifications, we can't always make those things exactly work. If they need a, a chemist and we don't have somebody in Stoughton who applies who is a chemist, then obviously they're going to have to hire from outside. But they are going to, they have assured us that they will make every effort to outreach for hiring purposes through Stoughton. We will, we will put that out there to the best of our ability within our, our, our legal allowances as far as we can advertise for a company. I certainly will be putting posts on my Facebook page to links when they're advertising and they've assured us of that, but they will be required to provide updates.
Also, if I could just piggyback that, Mr. Jammon?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
I think Pam McCarthy's on the, on the meeting right now. She might have some good insight on this too as to, to the technical reporting aspects of it.
Pam McCarthy, are you on? Could you provide us some insight on this?
This is Pam McCarthy. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So I actually track the TIF reports. All of the TIF recipients are required to submit EDIP reports every year. Amazon is on the calendar year and the others are on the fiscal year basis. So I, I do collect those reports and actually Amazon is close to the, the number of jobs that they had promised as of, as of January, they had 112 full-time jobs. They added 42 jobs in 2019 and my guess is because the type of service has been so busy that they have more full-time jobs since then and 12 of those are Stoughton residents. So, so there is tracking. I did put on the virtual table a report showing the, the progress that the current TIFs have made. Most of them are back from 2004, but there is tracking, so there is accountability involved when we do give a TIF to, to a company.
Thank you, Pam McCarthy. All right, let me move on. There's still 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, about 10 people that want to speak are in line. I'm going to go back to Joe Scardino. You were in line. You couldn't unmute yourself somehow? Can you see if you can unmute yourself now? This is for Joseph Scardino. And then he'll be followed by John Lanninghan. So once we have Joseph Scardino, can you try to unmute yourself, sir? Go ahead and talk, Joe. Joseph Scardino? Joe Scardino? No, okay, we're going to move on. We'll come back again. Next up is John Lanninghan.
They just muted you now.
John Lanninghan, once you, once you unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Thank you. John Lanninghan, Precinct 1. I fully appreciate the, it's the presenter's job and the town administrator's role to try to make these things work, but I have some concerns. We are dealing with, you know, it's been called a, a great business, but it really is truly a lucrative industry. You know, there is, as was described, they're the sole source for a number of products and material. So, you know, as was commented, they, they're talking about 10 or 15 additional jobs. It wasn't very clear. And I, I guess I just find myself asking the question, why this company? You know, this is, this is a precedent, especially for that area, as was mentioned earlier. I can imagine everybody's going to be coming for it. And the, the Reebok example was used previously and how long did Reebok stay there? As soon as the TIF ran out, it seemed like they ran out of town. So I would like to see us develop some objective criteria that would make it easier for town meeting members to analyze and other committees to analyze these requests for TIFs. I, I do find this one tempting to go along with for a lot of the reasons, but I just feel like it's a dangerous precedent. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lanninghan. That was just a statement. I don't see any question there. Was Dr. Grimm or Mark Tisdale like to answer that? I don't think there's any question. All right, let's move on. Brian Holmes, once Mr. Holmes can unmute himself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. I had a couple of questions. They were answered through the presentations. I support Article 21. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Tony Souza. Tony Souza, when you get a chance to unmute yourself and state your precinct number, please. Name and precinct number.
Mr. Moderator, again, Antonio Souza, Precinct 3, and I was in a select board member, one who approved IKEA. I think they've been a great asset to our town. I fully supported this and I encourage my colleagues to do the same also. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. We're moving on. We still have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 people online here. Next up is Joseph McDonough. Mr. McDonough, when you get an opportunity, please unmute yourself and state your precinct, name and precinct.
Joe McDonough, Precinct 6. For you, Mr. Moderator. I just had a question in regards to the town manager mentioned. This is a building that is being leased through this company, this TIF. Is this being approved through the company or through the building? For the example, if for some reason this company stays for five years, leaves, are we getting the full tax value of that building when this company leaves? Or is it staying with the building itself?
I'll defer to Lynn on that because I believe Lynn has addressed that. We were originally, I originally actually believed it was with the company. But I have been told since it goes with the building, but I was unsure of that. And I know Pam McCarthy had also been looking into the answer to that question. Pam may be able to clarify as well.
Yes, it does. In accordance to state law, the TIF basically stays with the property. And of course, the full taxes, if the company ever left, the full taxes would, you're, you're, you would still remain collecting taxes on the building. So as the town manager mentioned, the building, the 80,000 square feet will always be there. You could, in the future, if there's another, as an example, another manufacturing company that decided to locate there, should Globe Composite Solutions leave, then that would really be up to the town if they were, if they were going to maintain those type of jobs and really tie in with the scope of the project. So that's something that the town always has the ability to move forward with in the future is to potentially decertify a company if they're not in compliance. But to answer the question, the TIF stays with the, the property.
And if I might, if I might.
I just want to say, Dr. Grimm, that was Lynn Tukasik that answered that question for us. But go ahead, Dr. Grimm.
Yeah, I, I also want to point out that I think part of it is for us that there's a sense of security, number one, they're under contract for many years to produce. But my, my feeling is that even though, yes, it's a lucrative company, lucrative companies don't tend to invest 10 to 15 million and, and then walk away after five or seven years. So I know that they could technically, but I think part of the confidence for me in this is the degree of investment in a property that they don't own. And in fact, there's another renter on that property.
I, I agree. I just, I just wanted to, because the tax revenue we're getting isn't technically from the business itself. It's from the expansion of the building and the value of the building. So even if the company leaves, we are still going to get the tax revenue of the property taxes and that's the question that I'm asking.
Absolutely, we do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
At all, Mr. McDonough?
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I believe, 6 people. 1, 2, 3, 4 people online still. Next up is Mark Zemanian. Mr. Zemanian, when you can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Zemanian, Precinct 1.
Different if it was a new structure? Or a new business coming in?
Hey, Mark, Zemanian.
Thank you. I'm opposed to this. I think our investment in this area, this property in, in that Campanelli project was the sewer. The residents are footing a bill roughly, what, 4 to 5 million dollars for that sewer? That's our cost. I, I think the overall cost was somewhere in the areas of just under 8 million dollars. I do have a, a question to the petitioner or to whoever might answer the question through you, Mr. Moderator. In the presentation that was given, it was spoken that there's money donated to the schools, to the STEM program. I'd like to know how much money is donated annually to the Stoughton Public School Systems for science and education? And I also, my second question would be, how many residents do they currently employ? And are they intending on employing any further residents?
Okay, who can answer that for us?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. This is Mike Dyson.
Yes, Mike, Michael Dyson. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much for the question. Now, we currently have two employees that are Stoughton residents. We would love to have more. Please come down and visit us. In terms of our STEM activities, we've been out-supporting various school systems, typically in the robotics program. To date, we have not done anything with Stoughton, but we have with other area communities. And we do quite a bit with Northeastern, Wentworth and WPI.
So nothing here in Stoughton at this time?
Nope, but we're more than open.
So if the school committee or the school department was to approach you for a project, you'd be open to financing said project?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, next up is, we have 1, 2, 3 more people to speak. Jeffrey Iverson. Mr. Iverson, when you have the opportunity, please unmute yourself, state your name and precinct number.
Jeff Iverson, Precinct 1. My question was answered earlier. I had lowered my hand.
You're all set. Thank you very much. Next up is, we have 1, 2, 2 more people to speak. I want to see if we can get Mrs. Joe Scardino. Is he, we kind of mixed, you know, we bypassed you. You couldn't speak before. One more opportunity. Joseph Scardino. If you have an opportunity, I don't know if it was a mistake when you raised your hand or not. You can try one more time. Give you about 10 seconds. Okay, give you another opportunity here, sir. We got to move on. Next up on the list is Cynthia Walsh. Cynthia, when you can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number. Cynthia?
Yeah, Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 2.
Yes, Cynthia, we hear you.
I move the previous question.
All right. All right, Cynthia has moved the question. That means cut off debate. We had a lot of healthy debate and back and forth questions on this Article 21. If town meeting reps believe I'm cutting off debate too early. If town meeting reps believe I'm cutting off the bait too early, vote no. But at this point in time, we're going to take a vote on the question and cutting off debate. We need to clear the raised hands first. Once I'm told the hands are clear, we can proceed. All set, all those who want to cut off the bait, please raise your hand now. 10 seconds. Yeah, was there a second on that? I believe there was, Jean Fleming. Can we lower the hands, please? Clear the hands? Okay, all those who oppose cutting off the bait, raise your hand now. All right, can I get a count on the raised hands? Six. All right, cutting off the bait passes. Yes, 110, no, six. All right, this is on Article 21 on page 30 of your warrants. All right, at this point in time, does Mike, Michael Dyson or Dr. Graham want to do a quick summary?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Globe Composites enjoys being a member of the community. Look forward to being so in, for many, many decades to come. I just want to make one last comment. We do have a 10-year lease for that space with the first right of refusal for the space next door and at least two, five-year options thereafter. So Globe's intention is to be around for the long haul, and I thank you and your team for a very professional process. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Graham, any comments?
No.
I think we're good. Thank you all. Let's proceed to the poll. Once it shows up on your screen, we should be ready to vote. This is on Article 21, the TIF. Okay, you see the poll before you, Article 21. Please vote accordingly. Just stand by for, having a technical, we have a couple of people here. All right, we're having a problem with the poll appearing on some people's devices. Those people that, let me just say, those people having problems finding the poll, it's usually behind a screen. Uh, one suggestion is to, if you have the Q and A open, close the Q and A because the poll went behind it in some cases on some devices. Try to do that. All right, we're going to give you a bug. Those people hopefully can find the poll. This is just a simple majority vote on the TIF.
All right, those people cannot find the poll.
If you try closing the Q and A, it might be behind there or at the bottom of your screen. Poke around some of the screens, you might have got behind another screen. If you can't find the poll, please call the help desk right away, and we'll take your vote that way. You want to, you want to say that? We're going to have, okay, put your mouse over the zoom camera, that's what I'm told. I'm just trying to wrap up this poll. You want to say that to these people? We have an IT person here who can give exceptionally expert advice here.
All right, so two people that had problems, if you put your mouse, if you hover your mouse over the bottom where the zoom, the picture of the blue zoom camera is, you might see a window that pops up that says polls.
Four people having problems, I'm told. If people want to, you can put your vote right in the Q and A so we can collect your vote that way, or you can call the help desk. Might be quicker if you don't object, put your vote right on the Q and A, your last name, just those last, you know, those those people that have a problem so we can get your vote counted. Put your last name in the Q and A and either yes or no. Okay, there's a lot more.
We can redo it if we want to.
All right, we're having some issues. We're going to redo this poll. Moderator's discretion, we're going to end the poll, we're going to do it one more time. But before we do it, we're going to walk through a couple of suggestions. So we're going to end the poll. Just so we can get everybody, collect everybody's vote if it's at all possible. We're going to end the poll. All right, suggestions from IT? Well, before you relaunch it, could you just give us a couple of suggestions?
Hi, it's Trish, everybody. I just want to make sure, just make sure that you only have this window open when you do in the poll. And what we'll do is for anybody that has an issue, you can put something in the Q and A, and we'll accept your vote that way, but we prefer to do it through the polling. And maybe from restarting the whole thing from scratch on this number, Article 21, we'll have a nice, clear poll.
IT, can you post a poll? Okay, the poll is on the screen, please vote accordingly. I believe most people have seen their poll. If you haven't, please post something in the Q and A, we'll try to resolve that. Can we collect those votes? We're going to collect those votes offline. Okay. All right, 10 seconds. Thank you all for being patient, we appreciate that. Five seconds, four, three, two, one. Okay, can we end the poll, please? We're going to take the numbers, we're going to add three to the yeses. Okay, that's the, the results, yes, 116 plus three is 119 yeses, no, 17 abstentions, three. And that's Article 22, just need a simple majority, it passes, 116 yes, 17 no, three abstentions.
Where all these people come from?
All right. 116, 119, we're going, 116 plus three, 119 yes, 17 no, and three abstentions. Just to be clear, Article 21, the TIF has passed. All right, we're going to move on. Okay, I have a point of order here. Well, first, my mom. All right, I'm going to take the point of order, there's a point of order from Mark Zemanian. Mark Zemanian, when you can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number and express your point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My point of order on Article 22 is that there was no public discussion and in my opinion, no public hearing on this article. This is Article 22. Therefore, I'm not sure why town meetings should be hearing it without one. Could I get some clarification on that, please?
Would you like to weigh in on this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So it's my understanding that the Finance Committee did provide notice and did open its hearing on this article, that there was no discussion at that public hearing, that the public hearing was held. And in my opinion, that's good enough for the matter to come before town meeting tonight.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, the public hearing was in fact scheduled by Finance Committee as are all articles that are put on the warrant. The petitioner never came, there were questions from the public, one of them being from myself included in that. No answers were given to the Finance Committee and no answers were given to any public, public person or resident. Therefore, I would respectfully disagree. That doesn't, you have to have a petitioner there to answer questions in order for it to be considered a public hearing.
Mr. Moderator, through you. The public hearing was noticed and held, in my view. Whether the attendees got the answers that they were looking for is a different question. The Charter says that the hearing has to be held. It doesn't say that the petitioner has to appear. And so I certainly respect and understand the position that you're taking, Mr. Zemanian. In my view, that there was a public hearing, but it wasn't, you know, it didn't, it didn't provide the information that was requested or that was needed. Ultimately, whether people, excuse me, vote yes or no, that's one of the factors they can think about in making their decision.
Well, the Finance Committee is required to hold a public hearing. They too had questions, and there was nobody there to answer those questions. This may fit the technicality of a public hearing, but it sure as hell doesn't fit the spirit of what a public hearing should be. And if that's the way that the petitioner chooses to do things, so I hope this town meeting takes that into consideration. Secondly, there was no information about this article on the virtual town meeting table until Monday evening, well after we had started town meetings. So again, you know, this, this to me seems like nothing more than trying to slip something under the radar. I hope we're all ready for this tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I still object to this, to hearing this, but I respect you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, your objection's noted. I noticed, I did, you know, just as the moderator's discretion, I'll just give you my review of this. It's up to town meeting reps to decide how they want to handle this. Other towns have run into this situation, and it's up to the town meeting reps to review the actions taken, make the determination, and then vote accordingly. That's the best I can tell you because the town council says it can go forward. So we're going to go forward on Article 22.
So are we going to ask for a motion, Mr. Moderator?
I am, I am. One minute, please, Mr. Zemanian.
Thank you.
I'm going to have to call you out of order in a minute if you just kind of slow down a little bit, please. All right, now, since the Finance Committee does not have a positive motion on this, I'm going to ask for Select Chair Christine Howe, if she's available, if she can make a-
Yes, I'm prepared, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, go ahead, Christine.
I make a motion, I make a motion that the town vote to approve Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jean Fleming. All right, I'm going to ask for Finance Committee report by Ed Trunkfield.
Can you hear me?
I do, go ahead, Ed.
Okay. The Finance Committee voted 13 to two to not recommend the town meeting because there was no information presented to the Finance Committee at the time of our Finance Committee hearings.
Thank you, Ed. Let me read the Intergovernmental Relations Committee report. There was a typo in the warrant on page 31. They voted five to one, that's five to one. It's listed as six, zero, it's actually five to one, to not recommend the town meeting. All right, we have a, I'm going to ask for a presentation by Christine Howe. Did you want to make the presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe Mr. O'Regan has prepared a presentation on this article. I'll just briefly state that the board did discuss this and bring it forward to town meeting in order to better improve our ability to take action on a number of items included in our master plan related to creating a green space or open space in the downtown area. Currently, the way the Community Preservation Act is written, it's uncertain or I guess somewhat unclear if we would necessarily be able to create green space in the downtown, and therefore we were just seeking this change in the legislation to allow us to do that for the purposes laid out in the master plan. In order to do so, obviously you would need to approve this article. I know Mr. O'Regan has some more information he'd like to present that was provided on the virtual table in regards to the Finance Committee meeting. I apologize if anybody was not in attendance at that meeting. We don't receive invites to those meetings, so sometimes it's hard to know when they take place without checking the town calendar and accommodating our schedules accordingly. So therefore, I do apologize that no one was in attendance. I quite frankly just did not know about the meeting and when it was. But I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Regan if he's been unmuted so that he can present on this article. I know he has-
Before you do that, Christine, I have another point of order by Pat, Patricia Colburn? Patricia Colburn, would you like to state your point of order, please? And once you get unmuted, could you state your name and precinct number, please?
Patricia Colburn, precinct four. I guess I'm just a little bit confused when Select Person Howe said, read the motion as printed in the warrant. There isn't a motion. Maybe I'm channeling Howard Hanson from years gone by. Are you referring to the top paragraph that's the description? Or is that also written as if it were a motion?
I'm going to have Town Council answer that. Town Council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's various forms that authorization for special legislation can take. This is one of them. Essentially, this would then fall to the House and Senate Legal Counsel, working with the Board of Selectmen to come up with a piece of special legislation that properly addressed the needs in this case. And all of those discussions, of course, would have to happen, the discussions with the board would have to happen at an open meeting where a draft would need to be shared and approved.
I believe, yeah, I believe Ms. Colburn's question was actually if the paragraph that we see on the top of the screen is what's referenced when we made the motion as printed in the warrant. And that's, that's what I understand is correct.
Thank you, that was my question. I just wanted to make sure there was actually a motion because frequently there's the motion written down below where the votes are, and I just wanted to make sure we had a valid motion, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, we're going to hear from Bobo Regan, he's presenting. Mr. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bobo Regan, precinct one and Select Board. If I may just add a couple of points to what Select Chair Howe has already articulated.
Go right ahead, sir.
I'd ask the members to make reference to the memorandum that I put on the virtual front table. I would have attended the, the meeting of the committees, except again, we don't get notice. I wasn't aware when the Governmental Relations Committee meeting was, otherwise I would have tried to be there. What this article seeks is merely opportunity to put in place for the town, some tools to get done, a major project for the town, not to do it, not to fund it, to do nothing else but give us some opportunities to go forward in a timely manner. else but give us some opportunities to go forward in a timely manner. The downtown redevelopment economic plan, you know, is a policy statement. There's a concept drawing. The details of what we do and how we do it have yet to be put together. And those will involve coordinated activity, particularly the interest with the Redevelopment Authority, town staff, certainly the Planning Board, and other governmental entities. We've already seen work with the town as part of this. If you look where the depot is, to bring the depot and bring the railroad depot into a revived town center, you see where the town has acquired with that acquisition thirty odd parking spaces adjacent to the depot. This is a series of complicated, detailed transactions to put together. A major source of money for us to pull this off is in the Community Preservation Fund. Whether the Community Preservation Committee decides to recommend positively or not is not the question before town meeting. And I want to emphasize, in order for anything to happen with respect to the space that is the subject of this article, Community Preservation Committee would have to make a positive recommendation, and town meeting would have to vote for it. What do we have in mind for this? If you look at the aerial view of the space, you can see a number of properties. You can see a number of interests. And I'm happy to report that the Redevelopment Authority is engaged in bringing about the redevelopment of the downtown, of which open space and green space is a major component. How do we pull that off? Well, in some instances, it may be frankly cheaper for the town and better for the business to relocate various opportunities. If we do a relocation, does that mean we pay the fair market value as currently situated? Or does it mean if the town can do it, acquire substitute property and outfit that costs less money? At present, it is within the Community Preservation Act for CPC funds to pay outright. What is not clear is whether or not we could do a property exchange, which means if the town could work something with a property owner to reposition them in keeping with the overall downtown redevelopment for the good of the town, and that would create open and recreation space that we want. At present, it's doubtful that Community Preservation Funds could be used to accomplish that, even though the results would be the same. That's an example. And so what this will allow the Select Board to do is work with our delegation to fashion a bill. We've been in touch already with the legislative delegation. If they get this, they will work with us, work with committee chairs to fashion a bill that will give us this flexibility. Narrow in scope, strictly within the general, the downtown, narrow in scope, strictly to achieve the purposes of the Stoughton Center Economic Redevelopment Plan, which by the way, has been adopted as policy and accepted by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and moved the project forward. If we want the downtown to turn around, we need to make big changes. And in order to make the big changes, we need to position ourselves to do so in a timely manner. Now is the time to set ourselves up for that kind of success. So this is why this is brought forward today, to allow us to line this up. Let me look at it from the other side of the equation. Suppose we're able to work some agreements with property owners that require us to do some things, and the Community Preservation Committee would agree to make that recommendation to town meeting, but the current state of the act wouldn't allow them to do it. That will take, what, a year, two years to push through? Do we really want to put ourselves behind the eight ball for success in that regard? I don't think we do. So if we want to move ahead, give ourselves opportunities, that's what this is intended to do. And again, it wouldn't change the requirements of the Community Preservation Committee on presentation on the merits, or the town meeting vote to actually authorize the appropriation. Just gives us tools to use to get the success, to bring back Stoughton Center, which I believe is what the general mission, one general mission for the town is so strongly supported by town meeting. And that's why I ask you to support this article. And if an example of what this would mean for the town is necessary, thanks to the Facebook posts and the comments we heard from other members in the community who drove through a neighboring town of Norwood. They have a green. It's surrounded by businesses and restaurants. They were able to use that space for outdoor dining, for their downtown restaurants. We didn't have the ability to do that. There's other aspects of open space that I, that I think everybody can understand. That's an unexpected benefit that another committee had that really demonstrates why this would be a good opportunity to put ourselves in a position to take advantage of. If you believe that we should do this, but do not want to put the burden of doing it on the residential taxpayer, then allowing us to use Community Preservation Funds on an appropriate project is an attractive option that this would allow the Select Board to present for town meeting to accept. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Regan. All right, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. We have twelve people in line to speak. First up is Joyce Cardino. Joyce Cardino, when you have the opportunity to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
It's a mistake, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, it was a mistake. Okay, thank you for letting us know. Next up is George Stolinski. Mr. Stolinski, when you have the opportunity, please unmute yourself and state your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Stolinski, Precinct Two. Question, the article reads, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Courts for special legislation." And my question is, if this honorable town meeting votes no on this, does this stop this process?
May I answer that, Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead, Mr. O'Regan.
What process is the speaker referring to?
About authorizing, getting these special permits to spend money for buying the post office or whatever other buildings you're buying.
Well, I want to, I want to avoid, you know, anything. It, it does not allow us to provide options that might be cheaper for town, for the town taxpayers, if there's a proposal to buy. I want to take an example, just to illustrate it. If one of the things that we would want to do is to relocate, just hypothetically, some space for trucks to park, I would imagine that the fair market value for empty space paved over in the central lot of land in downtown Stoughton is more expensive than that same space, say, a half mile or three quarters of a mile away. If the person we're dealing with would accept relocating, we could buy that space cheaper, accomplish our goal, but we cannot now ask town meeting to appropriate CPA funds for that, because at present, it appears that would not be a permitted use of CPA funds. So would it prevent us from proposing it? No. But we would have to propose it either on general revenue or propose it together with a home rule petition to ask the legislature to let us do it. And that process is going to take a year, a year and a half to get through. So this just lets us come forward, doesn't require us to do anything, doesn't require town meeting to vote, just gives us a way to present more opportunities for the town to succeed.
Thank you both. Okay, Mr. Doise, are you all set?
I believe I am, sir. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Marty West. Marty West, when you have the opportunity, could you unmute yourself, state your name and precinct number, please?
Marty West, Precinct Two. I did not intend to be on this list.
No problem. Thank you very much for letting us know. We're gonna move on to, we're gonna welcome Peter Banas back, if he'd like to join us. If that was an error, just let me know, Peter. Actually, I can move on unless you're gonna jump in there. Okay, we're gonna move on to Johnny Inzavino. Mr. Inzavino, when you get. Banas, do you have a couple of comments? You have to unmute yourself. Go ahead, Peter. Can't hear you, Peter. Problem with your microphone, I believe. Yeah, I apologize, but I'm not understanding you at all. Your microphone is kind of giving us a problem. Peter, you want to put a question? You can pose a question in the Q and A for us. All right, we're gonna move on. Mr. Johnny Inzavino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I did have my hand up on purpose, so.
Precinct number, please?
Johnny Inzavino, Precinct Four, and member of the Finance Committee.
Go ahead, sir.
This is another case that the Finance Committee is ready, and we have absolutely nothing. So to answer a previous speaker, I will be pushing the Finance Committee to adopt a policy not to have anything on the agenda or noticed for a hearing prior to having all the information we need, number one, just to address that person. I'm still not quite sure on this, as far as, if you're talking CPA money for open space or for recreation, those are approved uses for CPA money. So if I understand correctly, this is because you're trying to use that money for those things, but you're trying to do things that currently wouldn't allow you to use the CPA funds to go after property? Am I understanding that right? Could I get an answer to that?
Mr. Moderator, may I respond?
Yes, Mr. O'Regan.
The answer to that is no. That is not what we're trying to do. In, in the private, in the private world, on a transaction, if a buyer and a seller find some property each has that the other one would like to use, the buyer and the seller can do an exchange. If they don't do a direct exchange, it's possible for a seller to sell and then buy a like-kind property and do an exchange. And that, those are transactions that are done. The terms of the Community Preservation Act now pretty clearly authorize a direct purchase. So that if we, if the town, the town meeting decided to vote for a direct purchase of some of this property, CPC funds could be used, because the purpose would be recreational open space in that area. But an exchange might actually work cheaper, and the exchange would save the taxpayer money and accomplish what we want to do. So that to the current property owner, this would allow us to ask the legislature to enable the town to find and buy a site that would satisfy a current property owner at less than it would cost to actually buy it from the property owner and get the open or recreational space that we need. But this does not request town meeting to let the board do, is go to the legislature and ask for use of CPA funds for anything other than open or recreational space that the Community Preservation Act now authorizes. So we couldn't go out and buy commercial property for any purpose. This simply, the example I'll use, because it's the simplest, is to enable us to try, if it is feasible, do a swap that would be cheaper for the town than an outright purchase. And that is to the benefit of the town and the taxpayer. That's all this seeks to do.
All right, I, I get the gist now, and I appreciate that response. Mr. Moderator, I'll just say this.
Good, sir.
At, at this point, just to stay, stay quickly here, I'm gonna recommend that we vote against this. The only way town meeting is gonna stop having articles come at the last minute with the information is to say no and make people come through the process. I don't, I don't agree with the fact that, well, nobody notified them that this article was being heard. They're all noticed in the paper. All the other people have, tend to come, and they know when they're supposed to be there. You know, it goes through the same office. They have a town manager that could certainly be notifying them that articles are coming up that they might want to be at or what have you. But I don't, I don't accept that as an excuse. And on principle, I'm gonna urge people to vote against this and let them go through the proper process of having a proper public hearing vetting of every article before it comes before this party. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Ms. Inzavino. Okay, moving on, next up is John Morton. Mr. Morton, when you're able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
John Morton, Precinct Three. I'm Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, but I'm speaking in my private capacity and as a town meeting rep, Precinct Three. This transaction, as proposed, contemplates that there might be an exchange of property. If there is an exchange of property without cash, then the CPC could only be involved under some very special circumstances. First, let me say, the CPC has not been addressed with respect to this matter yet, because the matter is at this point hypothetical. But if this project were to go forward as an exchange, there would be no cash exchanged. And at the end of the exchange, the town would own the property. The CPC, the CPA, the Community Preservation Act, does not permit the use of CPA funds to buy town-owned property and pay the town for the property. But that's, doesn't make sense in this case, because this is to be an exchange of property. So if this matter were to come before the Community Preservation Committee as a dollar exchange, if the town were simply to buy the property and that the Board would come to us and say, "Will you pay a portion of the purchase price?" We could, we could say yes. We could say, yes, we will recommend that. But the amount that we could recommend would be limited by the fair market value of the parcel set aside for open space. So if you assume that that would happen, and if you assume that it would be a good idea to have open space in the town, both of which I, as a citizen of the town, do assume, then it makes sense that CPA funds would be used up to the dollar amount of the fair market value of the open space piece.
Mr. Morton?
I'm sorry?
One minute. You're gonna have to summarize.
All right.
Sixty seconds.
I'll summarize in one minute, but I'll try.
Trying to be fair to everybody. Thank you.
If it's an exchange, then we would be asked with this special General Court legislation to contribute to the total cost only up to the fair market value of the open space, determined by an appraisal. I think that's an entirely legitimate thing to do, and I think the total cost of the town at the end of the day would be less. So I am in favor of trying. It's been twenty-five years since anything constructive has happened in the center, except for town-financed or state-highway-financed improvements. This is now an opportunity to do something, and I think it's time that we gave the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, a chance to get, to get it done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morton. Appreciate it. All right, we're gonna move on. Next up, we have like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I think eleven people still in line. Next up is Scott Carrara. Mr. Carrara, when you have the opportunity, please unmute yourself and state your name and precinct.
Moderator, Scott Carrara, Precinct Two.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I know another member of the Finance Committee mentioned it, but all the Finance Committee meetings are properly posted. Other people have found their ways to it. When we were on the Board of Selectmen, we got a packet. In the packet were several, several things that were going on with all the boards. We got it from the Secretary. It was right there. It was for everybody. Evidently, we got. Evidently, we gotta do everything by computers, so, you know, you don't have a paper trail to fall back on. But that's all right. I got a real problem with this article. We just passed the Recreation Open Space $500,000 Fix at Glen Echo. How much open space are we gonna do? The downtown needs more attention than trying to find a place to have an open space in a park. It needs a parking garage to service the businesses there so people can park and visit them. That's what they need. We have a rec center in the middle of a revitalization zone. Are we gonna buy the post office and then they're gonna move up to the armory? Is that the deal we're gonna make? We're gonna lose a big piece of property that could suffice a proper fire station? Because we're gonna worry about downtown open space? I don't understand it. The Economic Development, uh, Director has a program right now under COVID to help struggling businesses in the downtown, and we're talking about open space. We're always putting the cart before the horse. There's a lot more problems in that downtown. If they had just paid $280,000 for the Pacheco hardware, that's where the parking garage would have gone. They wouldn't have had to search for five spaces. Malkin and Parsons would be up, and it'd be all done. That's how you fix it. Not with an open park so transients can hang out, because nobody can find a parking spot to enjoy the businesses.
60 seconds, Scott, 60 seconds.
We had somebody come before the board looking for seven more liquor licenses to revitalize the downtown. How many have we given out? None. We don't even have a program on how to apply for them. I just hope the Town Meeting reps look at this, that it's another part of money we're sticking our hands into after we've already approved more and more and more things for downtown revitalization. Right now, we should focus on delivering services to the town because of what's happening, and then focus on jumping back into the romanticists of the downtown. Norwood is a whole different, uh, town compared to us. They had the parking lots for people to do. They're off the backsides and all that. It's a different animal. Stoughton is a different animal. We gotta get the grip that Stoughton's Stoughton. We can't be Norwood. We can't be Falmouth. We're not gonna be Hingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara, right at the buzzer. Thank you very much. All right, next up, uh, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. 11 people in line to speak on this article. Next up is Cynthia Walsh. Cynthia, when you have the opportunity, please unmute yourself and state your precinct, name and precinct number, please.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct two. Move the previous question.
All right, Cynthia Walsh, uh, made a motion to move the question. Is there a second? Seconded by Gene Fleming. Okay. Moderator will just make the statement that it's up to the Town Meeting reps if you want to cut off the bait. If you do, you know, vote yes. If you don't, vote no. There is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 people in line. Just want to let you know. All right, so we're gonna clear the raised hands so we can take a vote. Let me know when the hands, uh, raised hand screen is clear. All set. All those in, in favor of cutting off the bait, raise your hand now. Two-thirds is required. 10 seconds. Okay, can I get a count, please? Okay, let's clear the hands. Let me know when the hands are cleared. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hand now. 10 seconds. Okay, can I get a count, please? 31. All right, can someone do the two-thirds in their head for me? Okay, uh, cutoff debate passes. The vote is 89 yes, 31 no. So it's 89 yes, 31 no, needed the two-thirds. It passes the cutoff debate. All right, we're gonna, that was Article 22. We're gonna, if, uh, Mr. Oregan wants to summarize, quickly summarize, you may, or Christine Howell, you can quickly summarize one or the other.
Sure, Mr. Moderator. Um, I would just urge Town Meeting to approve this. As was stated by Selectman Oregan, uh, this is a somewhat lengthy process that happens before the legislature. They have a new session beginning in 2021 that will extend at least two years. Um, so this is just in anticipation of completing some of the things that we'd like to do in the downtown per the Downtown Master Plan, which was approved overwhelmingly by this body and the town in 2015, and included that economic development, uh, portion of the Downtown Redevelopment Plan. Um, this helps us achieve a number of initiatives we're conducting in downtown through our Redevelopment Task Force. Um, that what we're doing with our, um, you know, acquisition of the Train Depot, uh, some of the other programs in downtown related to the zoning rewrite. So this is all part and parcel to our plan to revitalize the downtown as a whole in its entirety, and will help us hopefully achieve some of those goals of the master plan. Um, and again, I apologize for, uh, not attending the Finance Committee meeting. Uh, you probably see me on every channel every night at various other meetings, and, um, sometimes we don't check all the agendas, uh, on the town calendar, so I do own that and apologize for that, but hope that this body will consider this article for its merits and what we're trying to achieve moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Howell. I, I just want to read, uh, on a virtual Town Meeting website, CPC votes in the fall 2020 STM1 articles. They had Article 22. It just says, "No action taken." I just want to make that part of the record, "No action taken." All right, this is on Article 22. If we can, uh, ready the poll. Okay, the poll is before us. Please vote accordingly, and it's a majority vote. All right. Let's end the, I think we're done with the, well, 10 seconds. We'll give you 10 seconds. Let's end the, okay, five seconds. Let's end the poll, please. Okay, this is for Article 22. Yes is 61, no 64, abstentions 2. Motion fails. Uh, it was 61 yes, 64 no, 2 abstentions. Motion does not pass. All right, we're ready to go. Article 23. Uh, on Article 23, let me just clear my screen here. On Article 23, we're gonna have, um, Ed Trumpfield read the motion, please. It's up on the screen now. Mr. Trumpfield?
Okay, all right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we are. Go ahead. We can hear you.
Article 23, proposed motion. Move to approve Article 23 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Seconded by Gene Fleming. Mr. Trumpfield, can you read your recommendation?
Yes, the Finance Committee voted 15 to 0 to recommend the Town Meeting as set forth in the proposed motion.
Thank you. Uh, I believe Robin and Paul Chafon would like to talk on this. I don't know who wants to go first.
Sure. Uh, just very briefly on 23 and 24, there was $75,000 extra, if you will, from what had been allocated to purchase the train station, uh, the depot. So we have that money sitting there. We can't just use it for rehabilitation or, um, or maintain, or, or capital maintenance on the project, because it had been authorized simply for sale purposes. So these two articles are done in conjunction, one to rescind that, if you will, to get that $75,000 back into the CPC funding. And then the second article is to give it back out for, um, renovation. And I, I know if, when we get to that article, they'll talk about the fact that there wasn't information. But Mr. Chafon has been working actively on trying to shore that building up, because we do not want it to fall into a state of disrepair. Somebody mentioned the Armory earlier. Uh, we have an architectural, historic architecture, a, a historic architect working on this to ensure that this is done properly. But really, what we're looking to do is put some of that money, we have some grant money, uh, put some of that money toward, uh, things like the roof and, and basic structural preservation. So I would ask that both of these articles, even though they're separate articles, be thought about as a unit, um, because they're presented that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. Paul Chafon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, like Dr. Grimm said, these articles are kind of in conjunction with each other. Um, so they're, the additional $75,000 for, well, do you want me to talk about 24 or just, or are you, are you just gonna do 23?
Only 23 at this time, Mr. Chafon.
Okay.
Article 23 only.
Okay, I'll speak on 24, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, we want you to speak, okay.
If I may add just one more thing, um, this article was originally gonna come before the Spring Town Meeting in June. Um, however, because of COVID and the expedited timeline, we waited until this Town Meeting. Um, and we did learn that we had to split the article to, initially, we wanted to just repurpose the $75,000, as Dr. Grimm stated. However, we did have to do this article to rescind the funding, and Article 24 is a separate article for the, um, use of the $75,000. So Article 23 is simply to rescind the remaining funds that were left over from the purchase of the Train Depot, which came in less than we thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you all. And Paul Chafon, you said you're gonna just talk on Article 24?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator. Um, Ms. Howell said exactly what I was gonna say.
Excellent. I don't see any speakers. Do I have any speakers? Okay, Mr. Rick Hill. Rick Hill, when you get the opportunity, please unmute yourself and state your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Hill, precinct two. Um, if it'll help, I make a motion to suspend the rules and consider Articles 22 and, uh, 23 and 24 together.
It's seconded by Gene Fleming. We're gonna have to use the raised hands to vote on that. Motion's been made to suspend the rules so we can discuss 23 and 24 together. And Rick, we probably should vote separately. You okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so we're gonna try to sus, motion, suspend the rules. It's been seconded by Gene Fleming. All right, we need to clear, uh, clear the raised hands.
So suspend the rules.
Mr. Moderator, I think there's a point of order.
Your point of order?
From Mr. Zamanian, it looks like.
Mr. Zamanian, do you have a point of order? Mark Zamanian, point of order?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I just, before Town Meeting, uh, votes to combine these two, I just want to be clear that these are two distinct articles from the CPC. One was a rescission. The second was a distinct request for 75, and they are not connected.
Thank you, Mr. Zamanian. All right, so a motion is to suspend the rules. It's been seconded by Gene Fleming.
Just, just to qualify, sorry to interrupt. Um, the motion is to consider the, um, to suspend the rules, to consider the two articles together for discussion only, and then you'll vote on them separately.
Okay, thank you for clarification. For discussion only, to discuss these two articles, 23 and 24 together, for discussion only. All right, we gotta clear the raised hands. They're clear. All those in favor suspending the rules, raise your hand now. 10 seconds. All right, can I get a count on the raised hands? Okay, let's clear the raised hands. Once I'm told we clear the raised hands, we can move forward. Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand now. Simple majority, right? 10 seconds. All right, can I get a count on the noes? 29. It's 85 to 29. I believe it passed 85 to 29 to suspend the rules. Let me just read, uh, it was on a virtual table on Article 23. I just want to read the CPC report. Uh, rescission of Stoughton Railroad Depot and spent funds. Two votes were taken. One on December 11, 2019, by a vote of 7 to 0. CPC voted to recommend rescission of up to $75,000. Then on October 7th of 2020, didn't make it into the warrant articles, the book. On, on October 7th, 2020, CPC voted to recommend rescission of $75,000 by a vote of 7 to 0. Just want to put that into the record. And I should read, uh, since we're discussing both, my apologies. Uh, Article 24 is listed here on the virtual table, too. On October 7th, 2020, CPC voted to recommend funding in the amount of $75,000 by a vote of 6 to 2. That was on October 7th by a vote of 62, 6 dash 2. Uh, CPC voted to recommend funding in the amount of $75,000. All right, so that clarifies that, and we, um, are gonna discuss both 23 and 24. All right, so at this point, Mr. Chafon, did you want to add anything for 24?
Uh, sure, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, so I believe it was 2015, uh, Town Meeting appropriated $350,000 to, for renovations to button up the building best we could. Now, through the process of an architectural study and some design work, and, uh, excuse me, a, a third-party estimator, the work that we'd like to get done, including those soft costs, which are the architectural engineering piece, is about, I believe, $410, $411,000. So the additional 75 would suffice for what we're trying to accomplish at this phase of the renovation, um, which is really just stabilization of the building. Um, the work entails, uh, roof and flashing work and masonry work. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All right, um, I'm just looking at the, the speaker list. At this time, um, we have Cynthia Walsh. This is to talk on either, on both articles. Cynthia Walsh? When you get a chance, Cynthia, just unmute yourself and state your name and precinct. Cynthia Walsh. Give you a couple more seconds. All right, she's having some technical issues. We can come back to you, Cynthia. Uh, Dan Pezzia? Oh, okay. We'll try with Cynthia Walsh again.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct two. I had raised my hand when these were two separate articles to move 23 and, it was too wise to do that right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dan Pezzia, can we unmute him? When you, can I mute yourself, Dan? Please state your name and precinct number.
No, the issue was resolved, Bob.
Oh, thank you, Dan. Uh, John Morton, when you get a chance to unmute yourself, please do so. State your name and precinct number.
John Morton, precinct-
John Morton, Precinct 3. I'm Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. There's a couple of things that should be brought to your attention. First, the original $350,000 was allocated and approved by town meeting several years ago. Since that time, construction costs have gone up. And therefore, the first predicted restoration costs have gone up. Add to that the fact that we were told that this matter was going out to bid now at the higher construction cost rate. And if we were to delay the $75,000 until the annual meeting, then they couldn't go out to bid at this point, they couldn't go out to bid until after July 1, which would push the whole thing back to a building season probably in 2022. We thought that the building was precious and had to be restored and retained and renovated and preserved. And therefore, we thought that there was some urgency in approving this $75,000. So first, I would say we should rescind Article 22, no matter how you want to vote on Article 24, because that money is never going to be used, it cannot be used. It was allocated for purchase, not for restoration. I would vote in favor of rescinding Article 23, but I would also urge that you vote in favor of adding $75,000 to the preservation fund in Article 24. As Mr. Zemanian said, they are separate articles, but it is $75,000 that was already set aside for that building. So I would vote to rescind $75,000 in Article 22, 23, and I would vote to add $75,000 to Article 24. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Who's up next? One minute, please. All right, we're moving forward here. Karen Clip? When you get a chance, Karen Clip, can you state your name and precinct number, please?
Pass on this, thank you.
Was that Karen? I didn't hear you.
Bob, I'm going to respectfully pass on this.
Okay, thank you. Ed Trumphyo, you're up next.
Okay, Ed Trumphyo, Precinct 5, FinCon Chair. I got some general questions. Who can ever might answer those? Probably Paul, Mr. Jafun. How much was the grant we got? And that's in plus on top of the 425. And then, do you have any idea what the total renovation cost is going to be for this property? Since it's on the historical register, to do with the historical architecture will be mucho deneros. And what is our end use for this building at the end of the day when we're all said and done?
Mr. Moderator, through you, I can probably answer a couple of those questions. The, the total, the total estimated cost is really dependent on how far the town wants to take it. This right now, like I said, is really just for stabilization of the building. And I know I could answer a couple more, but I forgot what they were, if the previous speaker.
How much was the grant that we got?
We got a grant for $75,000.
And what's the end use of the property?
I can't answer that.
Hi, Mr. Moderator, either myself, the town manager, through you, to the Speaker, Mr. Trumphyo. So the board is still determining the end use of the building. Some options we are considering include things such as a long-term lease that would allow for someone to go into the space, or a short-term lease, or selling the space. Those are just a few examples of what could be done. We have to consider the options in order to determine exactly how much the town is looking to invest into the building. As Mr. Jafun stated, this is to basically stabilize it, make it weather tight so it doesn't turn into another armory. So, you know, at this point, we don't have the ultimate end use determined. We've had multiple discussions about this, and we have done a request for information. And I know our procurement officer has done a bunch of research along with the Economic Development Director and the Town Manager, so we have the options that we need to consider and vote on as a board to sort of move forward with the ultimate use of the building. But again, this is just to make it weather tight and make sure that we can protect it so we can activate it as soon as we have that decision made.
Okay, one other question. Has anybody consulted with the Redevelopment Authority, whether they can float some bonds for some of this stuff? Or be, help out in some of the cost and stuff, since it's part of a redevelopment of downtown?
I know that we've had some discussions with the Redevelopment Authority about this property, and they've expressed interest in being involved in that process. We have a Downtown Redevelopment Task Force that's comprised of members of the Planning Board, or to selectmen, Redevelopment Authority, town staff. So this is also, you know, on the radar for that group. Again, we are sort of still working through considering what to do with the end use of the building, but this article specifically to make it weather tight and protect it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Trumphyo?
Well said.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Mr. Joe McDonough, please.
Joe McDonough, Precinct 6. I just wanted to clarify, I didn't hear an answer to the previous speaker's question about the, I know it goes to how in-depth we want to get to fixing this building, but what is the actual expected overall cost? Not just making it weather tight, but actually putting somebody into this. Like you said, it's on the historic registry. And second part of the question is, how long until it falls into disrepair? And it can just be torn down instead of dealing with the historic registry?
I'll start taking a stab at that. I know Paul has some numbers and projections that are provided by our architect and one of their subconsultants. Part of the benefit of the building, not only is it, you know, it's one of the only, I think, clock tower train depots in the Northeast, and the town purchased it specifically because of a lot of its historic significance to our community. But a benefit of some of these historic structures are that an investor, if they're going to either take over the building or potentially through a long-term lease, could actually take advantage of some historic tax credits in terms of what they invest to update the space, to use it for their needs. So there's a few sort of options there with the historic sites that are actually net positives for someone looking to either develop the space or if the town wants to preserve it for certain reasons and certain aspects of it. So it wouldn't, you know, I don't think it's in the interest of the town at this point to let it go to disrepair, to tear it down. As we've seen with the armory, some of the disrepair can also lead to some hazardous materials that would be expensive to do that. I know that maybe that was a comment made in jest, but I think, you know, the town's looking to make it weather tight and take care of the building since we just purchased it from the MBTA last July.
I get that, but we need to have numbers so we know what the cost benefit is. Just because it's something that's historic doesn't mean it's profitable or makes sense to go into the real estate business as a public entity. So we need to know numbers so we can know if it makes sense to do it, because you know what? If we tear it down for a little bit and we can sell off the lot for a heck of a lot more than spending millions of dollars into a building, then it makes sense to do it that way. History's nice, but not if it comes at the cost of bankrupting the town, so I'd like to know these numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I think also what we have to consider is that the town now owns this, and we need to make sure that we protect some of our assets as well. I know Dr. Grimm is looking to chime in, so I'll let her speak as well.
Okay, Dr. Grimm?
Yeah, just briefly on the numbers, and then I'll defer to Paul as well. I think the question is that, with the numbers, to get to what point? And that's really goes back to the board, to what Chairwoman Howe was saying. If it's the numbers to shore it up, Paul can sort of give you some basic numbers of, you know, what we're doing in the short term to fix it. And then ultimately, there are numbers on what someone might need to invest to get it where it's fully operational and a functional building. But we may sell it before that or lease it before that and have them do some of that capital investment as part of the lease. So I think a lot of it's going to depend going forward on the board. What we're talking about now, very immediate repairs and renovation, if you will. We, for instance, we removed all the bat guano last year because that was obviously an unhealthy condition. I'll defer to Paul on the numbers, but basically what we're looking at right now is just putting some short-term money in there for things like, you know, any leaks that might be popping up in the roof.
Yeah.
Paul has the breakdown.
Okay, I was going to say, I get all that. I know everything we just went over doesn't involve the numbers. I just want to know numbers so that we have, I know shoring it up and making it weather tight is all fine and dandy for $400,000, but if a person comes in and has to spend a million dollars, $2 million to fix this up to the registry of historic, historic registry, they're not going to buy it for another million dollars, so it's a lose-lose situation. So we need some actual real numbers of what it's going to cost to make it functional and not just shore it up.
Paul, Paul has some of those numbers, I think.
Yep, the numbers are on it. Paul, Jafun?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you. So the estimate, the estimate we got from that, that third-party independent estimator shows a minimum of $2.8 million, and that includes, it's broken down into five categories. The first section is the preservation of exterior elements. That's $626,000. Exterior restoration, $525,000. Interior restoration, $486,000. MEP upgrades and site improvements, MEP is mechanical, electrical plumbing, for those who don't know, is $1.1 million. And ADA improvements, $58,000.
So just a ballpark number, math off the top of my head, you're somewhere around 3 million, does that sound right?
Yes, sir, 2.8.
Okay, 2.8, so you're looking at 2.8.
Mr. McDonough, you're going to have to wrap it up, you're kind of over time.
Well, I, I've spent about 30 seconds talking, and I've gotten nothing but fluff, and I just got numbers for about 30 seconds. So we're looking at $2.8 million to make this thing that is sellable, that somebody wouldn't have to invest 2.8. How much are we expecting to get out of this building?
No, that's, that's not exactly accurate. The 2.8, again, those are broken into categories that someone who purchases the building or even has a long-term lease could do the investments themselves. That's one of the considerations.
Pay 2.8 on top of what we're going to sell it for, so in my mind, it's crazy even invest in this. So, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, next up on the list, we have 2, 4, 6, 8, 10 people that want to talk on this article, or these articles, I should say. Mark Zemanian, when you get a chance to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Precinct, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Precinct 1, Mark Zemanian. I voted against this because I am concerned about the costs that the previous speaker spoke about. $75,000 isn't really a large sum of money. However, this building's in a great deal more trouble than just $75,000. It also bothers me that we've sat on this money as long as we have. I understand there was some issues with getting the purchase done, but still, we've sat on this money an awful long time, and that just bothers me. This was brought to us as an expediated review at the CPC, and I was against an expediated review as well. So I just wanted the town meeting representatives to know that I was against this. Not necessarily against rehabilitating the building, but I, you know, I think it's important as town meeting reps to know what we're going to do with the building. And we don't know that, so to continue to sort of bring, you know, small articles of monies before town meeting without any sort of ideas to what we're going to do with the building. And I hear a lot of, well, we own it, you know, we have to fix it, we have to maintain it. And I agree with that, but I think there needs to be some forward motion here as to what we're doing with some of these properties that we own. Towns are not in the real estate business for a reason, and I thank you for your time, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, next up, Mr. Peter Vanis. I'm going to move forward, Mr. Vanis, I'll skip over you. If you want to jump in, you jump in, you're going to mute yourself. Next up is Jim Curtin. Mr. Curtin, when you get a moment, please unmute yourself and state your name and precinct number, please. All right, Jim, Jim Curtin?
Jim Curtin, Precinct 4, move the question.
Okay, the question's been called. We need to, let's see, I just want everybody to know that there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 people in line to still speak. And Mr. Curtin has asked to move the question, that means cutting off debate. We just need to clear the raised hands. Once I get notified the hands are cleared, we can take a vote on cutting off debate. Is there a second for us? Second, Gene, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. It's been seconded by Gene Fleming. Hands are cleared now. All those in favor cutting off the bait, please raise your hand now. Okay, can I get the count, please? All right, can we clear the hands, please? Let me know when the hands are cleared. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hand now. Again, this is two-thirds required. 10 seconds. All right, can I get a count, please? All right. The motion to cut off debate passes 94 to 20. 94, yes, 20, no. All right, now we're going to move to Article 23. This is just on Article 23, can we have the poll? I should say, does Paul Shafon want a quick summary?
Mr. Moderator, can summarize Article 23?
Christine, oh, go ahead.
Again, this was, this was going to come before the town meeting in the spring, and we postponed this article until the fall. This was money left over from the purchase of the train depot that we completed in July of 2019. So we want to get moving on this and not continue to kick the can down the road. So this article is just to rescind the extra funding, and we know Article 24 is to then repurpose that extra funding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christine Ho. I do have a point of order right now from Dave Laurie. Mr. Laurie, when you can unmute yourself, please state your point of order.
Yes, Dave Laurie, Precinct 6, thank you, Mr. Moderator. We just reached 10:30, and there's two articles left to vote on. I think we have to table this. I mean, look, you know, it's.
Dave, I have this article and one more after this, Article 24.
Well, there's other things that often take place in a town meeting to close the meeting, not just finishing up the last vote.
Suspend the rules.
Well, suspend the rules then to go to 11 o'clock.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, motion to suspend the rules. To go to the meeting.
Hang on, everybody, hang on.
The motion is to move the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Wow, wait a minute. Dave Laurie, you made the point of order.
40 ounces waterhouse.
One second. All right, let's do the vote on 23, and then we can, well, try to get 24 in. Here's the poll. All those vote on 23, vote accordingly, please. Just want to see if we can get the business done here. Okay, if we can end the poll on 23. Okay, if we can end the poll on 23. You show the results, please. Yes, 109. 11 nos, 3 abstentions. Article 23 was just a majority vote. It passes. Article 23 passes. 109 yes, 11 no, 3 abstentions. Now we're gonna move to Article 24. We discussed it together with Article 23. Christine, would you like to quickly summarize Article 24?
Yes, again, um, we were intending to bring this before you in the spring, uh, and we're informed that the process was to split the article into two for the repurposing of the extra 75,000. Town meeting has approved the purchase of the train depot, which was completed in July of 2019. Town meeting has also approved funding for the, uh, weather tight and upkeep of the building. We don't want to continue to kick the can down the road as we've done with so many buildings in the past, so we've immediately gotten to work on this one. As Dr. Grimm noted, we've remediated the bat guano, and we're continuing that work. We'd like to go out to bid and allow Paul Jafu and our facilities, um, manager to, to continue to do that. Um, and hopefully take advantage of some of the very low interest rates that we have going on right now for, um, some borrowing and construction projects. Um, so I would urge you to please vote in favor of this. Um, the board is working hard to determine the ultimate use of the building, but for now, we need to stabilize it and take care of it. It's a very valuable historic asset for the town, uh, which this body has approved the purchase and funding for its rehab already in the past. Um, so I appreciate your vote in favor of this. Thank you. Mr. Mellon, you are on mute.
I guess I'm on mute. Thank you, Christine. Can you read the motion for me, please? We didn't hear the motion yet.
Yes, uh, I move, uh, to approve Article 25 as printed in the warrant and as funding therefore to appropriate the sum of $75,000 from the FY21 Community Preservation Fund budgeted annual reserve.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Gene Fleming. Uh, Ed Trumpfield, can you just read the finance committee report? Ed Trumpfield, can you unmute yourself, Ed?
Okay, I'm on, I'm off. Who's in charge?
You're on now.
All right, I'm on now, okay. Uh, finance committee voted 14 to 1 to not recommend the town meeting because there was no information presented to the finance committee at the time of finance committee hearings.
All right, thank you. And let me just read again Article 24 of the CPC. This was on the virtual front page. On October 7th, 2020, CP voted to recommend funding in the amount of 75,000 by a vote of 6 to 2. I read that previously. Just want to get that on the record. All right, um, I think Christine, you summarized nicely. Thank you very much. So we are ready for the poll. We discussed this with Article 23 together, so the poll is before you. Please vote accordingly. 10 seconds, please. Yeah, I believe this is just a simple majority vote, too. Okay, can we end the poll, please, and show the results? All right, uh, we have 92 yes, 35 no, 2 abstentions. The motion passes. 92 yeses, 35 no, 2 abstentions. All right, now I can take, let me just clear that. Now there was a motion to suspend the rules. I can take that motion now. I need to, uh, who's gonna make that motion?
Yeah, yeah, Bob, this is Dave Laurie. Vote to suspend the rules so that we can complete town meeting at 11:00 PM.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Gene Fleming. We're gonna take a raised hand. Do I need discussion? No. All right, we're gonna just take a vote on suspending the rules so we can go to 11:00 PM. All right, we need to clear the raised hands. Okay, ready to go on. Everybody that wants to vote yes, do so now. Raise your hand to suspend the rules. 10 seconds. Okay, can I get a count on that? Okay, can you clear the hands?
Oh, okay.
Clear the hands. Let me know when they're clear. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hand now. 10 seconds. All right, can I get a count? Can anybody give me a count? Okay. Uh, the motion passes to suspend the rules. 96 yes, 11 no. That's 96 yes, 11 no. Motion to suspend the rules. All right. We have completed Article 24. There's a point of order. John, John Anzavino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Anzavino, precinct four. Uh, since, since it's been approved to, to suspend the rules and go to 11, my point is, once we finish the articles, which I think we have now completed all the articles, we had voted, we couldn't take any reconsiderations until that time. And I would like to move that we reconsider Article 6A, which was the, uh, there was amended motion to the main motion for an extra $200,000. And I'd like to take that article up for reconsideration because the summary on that was kind of disingenuous and misleading, and I think town meeting should really hear that.
Seconded by Dave Laurie. Do I need to hear discussion? Okay, John, can I hear your reasons for a little more reason for reconsideration?
Yes, because when the, the finance committee had, had proposed to take, um, a certain amount of money out of stabilization to make up for a revenue shortfall. Since that time, the board of selectmen had voted to take an additional $200,000 out of that stabilization to make up for a revenue shortfall on the overlay. But they took out a lot more than what was requested from the assessor's office. And in the summary, it was mentioned that this would help the children. And then, uh, the superintendent had agreed, you know, yeah, they could use the money. And I felt that was very misleading to town meeting because, A, the extra $200,000 gives the schools no more money than what the main motion was from the finance committee. And I felt that was very misleading to throw in that it would help the kids because it doesn't. It doesn't help them any more than what the main motion was. Second point is, and it was, it wasn't really discussed, but what we were told is the state was satisfied at the 850. The town accountant was satisfied with the 850. And in fact, it's similar to the snow account that if you did go over, you can account for that by taking it off the top of the next year. And I, I just thought it was very misleading the way it was summarized that, oh, yeah, and it would help the children. And, and we really didn't get a good explanation why they were looking for 200,000 when the request was for 160, and we gave them half of that, and people seemed to be satisfied with it both at the state level and our own accountant. And I, I just like people to take that into account and reconsider the vote.
Mr. Moderator, are we about to respond to this? You're on mute, Mr. Moderator.
And, uh, let me hear from Dr. Marcus for us.
I just want to clarify. I'm not sure what Mr. Anzavino was saying, but we, we didn't say anything about the $200,000 and, and anything about the $200,000 are helping the children. We were simply, when I was speaking, I was solely speaking to the 542, 767.
No, I understand that, but the way it was summarized...
Okay, don't cross debate, please. Don't cross debate.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Mellon, I wanted to agree, I wanted to agree with the superintendent's statement. I believe when we voted on the amendment in the main motion, um, basically there was no debate after the amendment, and we just voted for the main motion after the amendment was approved. Um, so we essentially summarized the entire article, including the budget line item adjustments, which accounted for the additional Chapter 70 funding, which Dr. Marcus referenced. And then there's the funding sources which related to the overlay. So that was a separate part of the discussion. There's, you know, six line items there for, for Article 6, so I think, um, maybe it was just confusion as to what was referenced in terms of the funding for the, the, the public schools, which related to the Chapter 70 funding and did not relate to the overlay increase.
Right, that's what I had.
Uh, Ms. Anzavino, uh, just for, uh, documentation, I need to ask you, how'd you vote on the original article last week?
I'm actually not, I'm not positive.
You're on the prevailing side. Not positive? Okay.
And I know I've been contacted by someone who said they did vote for it, and, and they had asked, actually asked me if we might be reconsidering this.
Uh, I'm gonna allow a little limited further discussion on this. I gotta go to, uh, there's a few people that want to speak, four people in line. Uh, limited discussion on this, so it won't take all night. We only have till 11 o'clock. George Stolinski, please, when you get a chance to mute yourself and state your name and precinct number. Mr. Del...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, just, I'm sorry to interrupt on this discussion, but I think we made a mistake on Article 24. When Ms. Howe read the, uh, proposed motion, it said to move...
You're out of, out of order right now, sir. We're talking about, um, Article 6A.
Will you recognize me for, uh, the next article then, please?
Oh, well, let me, uh, let me hear from Article 6A first, or 6, I should say, and we, if you bring, bring that up again, we can talk about that. So you're talking about 24?
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
So let me go to, uh, next up is Stanley Zoll. Mr. Zoll, when you get a moment, can you unmute yourself and state your name and precinct number? Stanley Zoll. Mr. Zoll, go ahead, Stanley. Yes, I can. Go ahead, state your name and precinct number.
Uh, Stanley Zoll, precinct seven. The figure that the assessors wanted to recommend to the select board for the transfer from the stabilization fund was actually 930, which was an amount agreed upon by our, um, then director, um, the consultant to the appellate tax board, and also the, uh, our, our revow consultant, uh, dealing with appellate tax board cases as well as the abatements and exemption issues. Um, so that would have been 80,000 over the, um, 850, which, uh, the town, uh, the FinCom just mentioned, uh, not 200,000. Uh, I try...
Don't forget, Stan, Stan, can I just interrupt you? Don't forget, we're just talking about to reconsider.
Okay, all right. Uh, there was a communication I had with select board before the last meeting, before, uh, this meeting, and, um, evidently there, and, uh, uh, one of the other board members also spoke to, um, um, members of the select board, and, uh, evidently there was some confusion, so we're trying to get that clarified. And I can, I can, I can say that I voted for, um, in favor of Article 6, so if I have to be the, um, person presenting, officially presenting the, uh, article on consideration, I will do so.
Okay, thank you, Stanley. Next up is, uh, John Rock. Just, we're just talking about whether we're gonna reconsider the article. That's it. Not on the merits of the article, but just reconsideration. John Rock? We're, we're just waiting for John Rock, if he can unmute himself. Mr. Rock, just start talking if we can hear you. Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, next up, Mr. Vanis. Peter Vanis, I don't know if you had it ever here. Okay, we're gonna move on. Diane Dolan. Diane Dolan, when you get a chance to mute yourself and state your name and precinct number. This will be just on the merits of reconsideration. Diane Dolan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane Dolan, precinct seven, finance committee. Uh, I guess I am a little concerned that if we are bringing this up for reconsideration, what are we reconsidering, and is there a reconsideration motion that someone wants to make? Uh, I also voted in the affirmative for this, um, this article, so I would be available for a motion. Thank you.
Next up, Ed Trumpfield, just on the reconsideration, the merits of reconsideration. Ed Trumpfield.
Hello, am I on?
Yes, you are, Mr. Trumpfield.
Uh, yeah, I think this, uh, this does merit, uh, reconsideration because, uh, we're setting a very bad precedent of using stabilization funds to fund an overlay account, which is an annual budget i- item. Every single year we deal with that. This is not catastrophic, it's not unforeseen, it's not extraordinary. And for all those reasons, there are other funding sources available to take care of this, and it should not be come from stabilization. It's a very bad precedent to be setting. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. David Laurie, just on the merits of reconsideration.
I'm in favor of reconsideration, and I'd be, I'd like some, a moment to share some new information that I have.
If you can be brief.
Do I go into it now?
Well, are you talking about the merits of the reconsideration or the actual article?
Oh, no, well, the merits of the reconsideration. So I, uh, I made a call to the Department of Revenue, and, uh, they, they made calls to me. So they were very curious about what happened with the vote that we took. So I shared the information with the people from the assessors division, where, I don't know what the name of their division is, but the, um, the folks there said that they've never seen anything like this. It's a, it's unprecedented using stabilization as something to prepare for some unforeseen thing that may happen in FY22. They understand why we're preparing for FY22. So it is important to prepare for that, but they've never heard of any town or of, of any, anywhere throughout the Commonwealth that did something like this. I just thought...
All right, Dave, that's really talking about, we, we need to talk about, you know...
I'm in favor of reconsideration.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move on. Deborah Roberts, this is just on reconsideration. Deborah Roberts, this is just on reconsideration. Deborah, Deborah Roberts, when you get a chance, select member Deborah Roberts, unmute yourself and state your name and precinct number.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to unmute myself. I'm against reconsideration of reopening this amendment because these are unprecedented times. And, and that's because of COVID, and it's also because ordinarily, an overlay would be a part of a joint cost. And that's point number one. Point number two, I agree with what Superintendent and Board of Selectmen, Madam Chair stated when they made an affirmative regarding the school. It had, it was regarding the budget, I'm sorry, regarding this amendment overall, and the budget overall. It was not specific to this additional funds would help the students. So those are the two points I wanted to make.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Louis Gieto. We're getting close to 11 o'clock. I have 10:57. Louis Gieto's next.
I was about to say it's almost 11 o'clock. And I, my recollection of the discussion was that it really was not necessarily going to affect the town. If we didn't use the money, it could be put back in the stabilization fund next year. I, I voted in favor of this. I'm not in favor of, of opening this up again.
Okay, thank you, sir. Scott Carrara.
Scott Carrara, Precinct 2. I'm in favor of, of the motion due to the fact that the amendment expanded the scope of the, the article. It's like saying if we were going to buy three Cruises, and all of a sudden, we said, no, let's throw the fourth one in there. It's, it's expanding the article, and I don't care what anybody says. We never allowed it, and all of a sudden, this just slid through. And when I asked a question, Town Council said, you missed it, so it's going to just fly through. It just, it's just, it's okay for it to go. And that's what was said.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next up, Pat Colburn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pat Colburn, Precinct 4. I am in favor of reconsidering. I would like to hear from Mr. Trumphy, not to put him on the spot, but would he have a motion that would give correct amounts and funding sources? Because I, I believe Mr. Anzavino made a motion.
Well, we have to, first, we're going to have to take a motion, a vote on reconsideration.
And I believe, didn't Mr. Anzavino do that? And we never called for the second vote.
We haven't voted on it yet. Just asking for discussion. Okay, one minute, please. Let me confer with Town Council. Hang on. All right, we need a motion to suspend the rules again to continue this discussion this evening. Can I get a motion from someone? Motion by Jean Fleming.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Second, I need a name.
John Anzavino. Jim Curtin.
Second, Jim Curtin. Thank you both. Jean, what was your time to what time?
Midnight.
Midnight. We're going to go to midnight. Motion was made to midnight. All right, now we got to take a vote on that. What's that?
We want to finish tonight. We don't want to force it to come back Wednesday.
That's correct. That's correct. All right, well, let's take the vote. Okay, we need to clear the hands. This is to suspend the rules so we can go to midnight tonight. Suspend the rules. We need to clear the hands. Are the hands cleared? Let me know. Are they cleared? Okay, all those who want to raise their hands in support of suspending the rules, do so now. Raise your hand. Vote yes on it. 10 seconds. This, it's two-thirds required. I'm told it's two-thirds. So can I get a count on that, please? I haven't got a count yet. Okay. Wait, clear the hands, please. All right, all those opposed, vote, raise your hand now. 10 seconds. What'd you say? What number was it? Okay. All right. 58 yes, 41 no. It fails. We're going to need a motion to continue the Wednesday night. Anybody wants to make that motion? The motion failed to go to midnight tonight.
I'll move that we continue this on Wednesday night, October 28, at 7:00 PM on a virtual meeting.
I'll second it.
That's John Anzavino, Precinct 4.
John Anzavino, to Wednesday night, 7:00 PM. Who's seconded, Diane?
Yeah.
Diane Dolan. All right, that's a motion. We'll need to take a vote on the motion.
And just, just to be clear, Bob?
Yes.
What Mr. Delinsky was bringing up was that the motion that was read for Article 24 was in error. It contained the wrong number. So that's going to have to be fixed, so.
It was a typo. It was a typo.
But it was read that way, Bob.
We can clear that up on Wednesday, Mr. Delinsky. Is that all right with you? We'll do that. All right, so first of all, let's, let's take the vote on continuing this meeting till Wednesday, October 28, at 7:00 PM. I need to clear the hands again, please. Please let me know when the hands are clear. All right, all those in favor of voting yes, raise your hands now. This will be just a majority. 10 seconds. Okay, can I get a count, please? Okay, clear the hands, please. Please let me know when they're cleared. Clear, okay, all those opposed, raise your hand now. 10 seconds. Can I get an account, please? Okay, motion, the simple majority, motion passes. 61 yes, 42 no. That's 61 yes, 42 no. We will see everybody here on Wednesday, October 28, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, everybody, have a good evening.